Let me know when that is.
Okay.
That's fine, actually.
Okay.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We are here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. Presently, we have our administrator, the three, we have two board of commissioners. Commissioner Mullen has yet to arrive, and we have our clerk of the board. So at this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presently, we have a quorum, so we're going to proceed with the meeting. First order of business here is adoption of the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the agenda as presented.
I second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the approval of the warrants and payroll registers that I'll ask, rosters that I'll ask Commissioner Baumann to please announce. And with that, I will say that with the consultation with our legal, that these are really acceptable by what percentage?
It looks like based on a survey that was conducted by MRSC, roughly sixty-five percent of municipalities approve meeting minutes and warrants on the consent agenda, Commissioner Chair.
Next meeting, these will be on the consent agenda items, so that anybody that is interested could go to our agenda and review them before the meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of salary clearing payroll and emergency management payroll in the total amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents as presented, and note that it has been signed by our auditor, our auditor and one of his staff. Yep.
And Mr. Danzel. And our administrator.
It has not been signed by our administrator yet.
Okay.
This is two different ones.
Commissioner Mullen.
It's for two different amounts.
We've already got it going. He's doing the announcement of the, and they're going to be on consent next meeting, so we don't have to do this anymore.
Yes, this is two totally different vouchers. So this is payroll and this is fund expenditures. So you haven't signed that one.
No, I didn't know there was a signature.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to give it one more crack.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of salary clearing payroll and emergency management payroll in the total amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents, and note that it has been signed by two members of our auditor's office and our county administrator.
I second. All in favor say aye.
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 And then, Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of fund expenditures in the total amount of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents as presented, and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two members, two representatives of the auditor's office and our county administrator.
I second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment? Anybody on the phone? Nobody on the phone. I don't see anybody coming forward. Takes us down to the approval of the consent agenda. We have items one through four.
Move for approval of consent agenda items one through four as presented.
Second.
Been a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda items one through four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to a public hearing. Ordinance repealing ordinance number O2 dash twenty twenty-four dash B and O2 dash twenty twenty-four dash C, presented by Jeff Briggs, our deputy prosecuting attorney. And at this time, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Briggs.
Sorry, and sorry Chair, I misidentified that. That's, this does not need to be a public hearing. This is a, an ordinance that's repealing an ordinance that adopted a comp plan amendment. It's kind of a gap in our code.
So we don't need a public hearing on this?
No, no. So just, just to sort of give a rundown of what happened here, the original ordinance amended our comp plan if the board recalls. That ordinance was appealed to the growth management hearings board. That, when that appeal happened, that ordinance was actually stayed. And what happens legally when, when the ordinance is stayed, it's as if it never happened. And the reason why it was stayed is because the statute says so, and it's because the, the ordinance itself, what it was attempting to do was, it was expanding a, what's called a lammert. It's a local area of more intense rural development. And so that was challenged by the Attorney General's Office. It still is right now. This ordinance will effectively repeal that ordinance that's being challenged. That will effectively terminate that litigation. And once that ordinance is repealed, we can forward that to the Attorney General's Office, and then again, that, that will terminate that litigation. So again, lammert's these local areas of more intense rural development. These are areas that are sort of pre-Growth Management Act. They were in existence, again, before the Growth Management Act was passed, so in the mid nineties, like nineteen ninety-five, in existence then. There's sort of, my analogy that I use for them, I just sort of made this up. They're sort of like wildfires. You're supposed to, under the Growth Management Act, contain them and not allow them to spread. And that's, that's the way that I've sort of always looked at them. So you establish this logical outer boundary for, for lammert's, and then you're not allowed to have these spread. So that's sort of where, where we're at for that. We have done that under our, our comprehensive plan through our zoning designations themselves. So we're okay, I think, as long as we repeal this ordinance. So that is the proposal before the board to repeal this ordinance, which again, would effectively maintain the status quo before the ordinance was passed, which would bring us back into compliance with the Growth Management Act.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Is this one ordinance or ordinance is, because there's B and C. Is it all contained in the one ordinance?
It's one ordinance repealing two.
Okay. All righty. So any other questions, commissioners?
No questions.
If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of ordinance zero-two dash two zero-two-five as presented.
Second.
Been a motion and a second for the approval of ordinance zero-two dash twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to regular business. Bid opening Franklin County HVAC maintenance prepared by Jennifer Wagner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Franklin County has a current maintenance contract for all of our properties. March thirty-first, that, that contract expires. We advertised in the Franklin County graphic on February twentieth and the twenty-seventh, and advertised on our Franklin County website for a mandatory walkthrough on March fourth. During that time, we had four companies that attended that mandatory walkthrough, and now we'll open, I believe we only received two bids. Is that correct, Teresa?
Yes. At this time, I'll open the bids. The first being from Apollo Mechanical Contractors. Usually, it's the last page, isn't it?
Or the first page, or the third page.
I would think it would be on this letter, but I don't see an amount here.
In the RFP, we have a form that they should fill out with the total.
Oh, this would probably be in this envelope. It's a double envelope. Like Christmas, all over again. Okay, it looks like. Want to make sure I announce the right number here. You might want to come in, because there's numbers all over this thing, but I don't know if I'm looking.
Is this what they should be filling out? Bond. That's cash flow. That's, I think this is all their financial information. This is all their financial information.
Okay, so this is also, they sent this. There's no number on there. It's only percentages at the top.
That's their bid bond.
Okay. First page and the last page.
I know, I just.
While you're looking for that one, I'll get to opening this envelope. Maybe you can help me out and find the amount. I don't either. And I'm looking through. The second bid is from Bruce, and I'm looking for their bid also.
No, that's the companies that they used.
Huh.
This has never happened. This is.
And I don't see one from Bruce either. Should be pretty well labeled.
There should be just one page where it has the attachment.
This is Bruce's envelope. Oh, there's more in here too. Maybe I missed it here.
Yeah, that's the proposal right there on the front page.
Hundred and ninety-one? Okay, so.
So that's the, that's.
This is Bruce's. This is Bruce's bid. It's a, their proposal, their bid is one ninety-one, hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Did we find anything in Apollo's?
I didn't find anything in here.
So we're going to have to give them a call for this, this paper here of the proposal.
So Bruce's is one ninety-one, nine thirty-six, thirty-six?
One ninety-one, nine thirty-six point two five, twenty-five cents. I'll put Bruce's back in the envelope.
Mr. Chairman.
Did you find it?
There it is, yeah.
Okay. And Apollo's. Thank you, Jennifer.
No, thank you. Appreciate your patience.
So Apollo's bid is two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. So at this time, we'll give the bids back to you, and legal will look them over, correct? Those are the only two bids we received for the HVAC maintenance presented by Jennifer Wagner. All right. Thank you, Jennifer. So that concludes our bid opening. We'll move down to regular business. Item number two, resolution twenty twenty-five oh one oh one, approval of chief financial analyst's job description and confirmed promotion of Public Works employee presented by Craig Erdman. Mr. Erdman.
Good morning, Chair, and Commissioners. In twenty twenty-two, I presented the Public Works Department Organization and Staffing Needs Report to the Board. The report showed the proposed organizational structure and succession planning goals of the department. This structure reclassified several positions and created some new positions as well. One of the created positions was the chief financial analyst, referenced in the report on page five, section three. On March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three via resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight five, the Board approved the Public Works organizational chart, which included the position of the chief financial analyst, and was approved again on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four via resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven eight, with a minor change that was required by the County Road Administration Board. With the retirement of one of the two financial systems analysts in February of this year, and with many of those additional duties taken on by the remaining analysts, I felt that this was the time to fill the chief financial analyst position. The position was posted and a candidate selected. However, it was discovered that an oversight on my part, that though the position was approved by consensus by the Board in twenty twenty-two, not all the proper steps were taken to classify the position. This was just recently discovered after the position had been recruited and filled in good faith. The request is to correct this oversight and move forward with the position with the effective date of the promotion. This is a grade eighteen position, which is consistent with the duties and responsibilities of other similar staff positions within the Public Works Department. This will also provide a financial savings to the department of approximately fifty to sixty-seven thousand dollars per year, depending on the needs of the department. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, commissioners? Mr. Danzel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support this, and I met with Craig and Margot this last week. And one of the, one of the things that is a lot of times glossed over is how important the understanding of the CAM's accounting system is. If we don't get the reporting right on that, we stand to lose our eligibility for some of the rural arterial program funds. And so I think that this is a wise use of this position, and that we should do this. I concur.
Commissioners.
Questions?
No questions.
No questions? So you've already admitted, you've already filled the position without the authorization.
I have. I thought we'd already gone through this step. That error is on mine, on me. We offered it in good faith. He accepted in good faith, and we just wish to carry on. And it is a needed function in our department.
Yeah, and I just want to just clarify that, was it, was it internally that somebody moved up, or was this a new hire?
Yes, this was an internal promotion.
Okay.
We had a person that had many decades of experience and had been, the duties had been split between him and another person, which had since retired. So some, a great deal of those duties fell on to this candidate, and that was why we felt it was time to grant. Essentially, now that is the chief financial analyst position.
And I'd just like to say, I appreciate the fact that you came forward and were honest with us, that it was filled without our approval. So I appreciate that, and that, that's just being open and transparent.
We had gone through the steps, but I'm sure it was, and I'm guilty of this at times, where I get started on something and think I finished it, and then got turned in another direction.
And I'll just gotta, and I also got to say that the commissioners, this is one of our, our prime responsibilities is county roads, so, and hearing Mr. Danzel, what he said, I think that at this time, we'll just, I'll entertain a motion.
One question. This was brought before us in, what, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah. No, I just want to say thank you for catching it and bringing it to our attention. So with that, I will make the motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero one.
Second.
Been a motion and a second for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-five oh one oh one. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to Commissioner Administrator updates. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this past week, I sat in on quite a few different meetings, sat in with you discussing transit for our veterans, and, and actually got a commitment that the folks are going to look at being able to utilize dial-a-ride more often, which I think would be great for our veterans that are trying to make it to Walla Walla for their medical checkups and appointments. And so I think that went extraordinarily well. Hapo, so we have a grant with the Department of Commerce for the HVAC system out there. And one of the things I would ask for today, maybe possibly coming out of this, is because we, it's such an important funding mechanism for out there, and because we're up against some deadlines, I'm going to probably be asking folks and support staff for expedited coordination and routing on this, because it's important that we get these forms in and we get our reporting done that we have to. So if you see any emails or a flurry of emails, me asking for information from staff, it's because it's timely and it's necessary. So I wanted to point that out. We had a budget review committee meeting here yesterday, and I have a statement to read. There have been really kind of a tough situation that has transpired in that. I've been getting approach from folks asking about the one point four million dollars that was mentioned at the previous meeting being returned. I think what I'd like to do is read this, so folks have an understanding of how the budget works, because this has been given, I think, an incorrect label of what we actually have happened. And people are asking, what can we do with those one point four million dollars? And so if you're okay with me reading a statement.
Yes, please, Mr. Danzel. Go ahead.
All right. So during the public comment period of March twelfth, Franklin County Board of Commissioners meeting, Sheriff presented a letter and provided comments referencing the returning of funds to the county and his twenty twenty-four budget. And so already, we've been asked what the county intends to do with those returns, and if we could apply those monies to other services, or, as the Budget Review Committee was meeting, if we could use it to help balance the budget. As the Board of County Commissioners are the budget authority for the county, they're tasked with the proper oversight, maintenance, and management of the budget. I believe it's worthwhile explaining the budget in general, as well as this specific issue. County Commissioners historically were known as county road commissioners and were responsible for the oversight of the county road budget on the taxes levied against your property for the building and maintenance of roads. As time went on, and as the state of Washington began treating counties more like a political subdivision of the state, the number of mandates, both funded and unfunded, increased exponentially. Along with the funded mandates, grant money came. An extra budget oversight was required. Because of the increased role the county commissioners were playing, eventually, the budget in its entirety became the responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners. And as a keeper of the budget, it's the Board's responsibility to be transparent and correct erroneous information. A budget is an estimate on what any entity plans to receive in revenue and what any entity plans to spend on expenditures. A budget is a plan. Where there is a disconnect at times is that the budget isn't the same thing as what we actually spend versus what we receive in revenue. In other words, the budget doesn't reflect the amount of money we have to operate with. That's called our cash position or cash on hand, the amount of monies we actually have on hand available to spend. While the overall budget is the responsibility of the Board Accounting Commissioners, each elected official is responsible for their own budget in that, the Board relies on their expertise and experience to forecast both revenues and expenditures for the year. This makes sense because the elected official of each Department of Government will know their own operation better, as they are the officials overseeing that department. Forecasting has become a very important part of the budget process, because unlike the federal government, counties cannot have deficit budgets. Our budgets must balance. There may be disagreement about how we go about balancing the budget, but by law, our budgets do have to balance. Every dollar of revenue must be accounted for in the expenditures. What happened in this circumstance is that the revenue forecasted for the Sheriff's Department wasn't accurate, combined with nearly six hundred thousand dollars in transfers from contingency and reserve funds over the adopted budget amount. No funds were returned, because no funds actually left the general fund. A great way to think of it would be if you prepaid for gasoline at the gas station. Say you pay a hundred dollars, prepay a hundred dollars, but you only use eighty. The additional twenty dollars isn't being returned to your checking account, because it never actually left. That is what happened in this case. So folks, I want you to know, there's no one point four million dollars that's been returned that we have just sitting here, because like the gasoline analogy, there were no funds that were left, or no funds that left the general fund to begin with. What this was, was really a miscalculation of revenue combined with budget transfers. And I think that that's important, because I really have been asked, hey, are we going to use that one point four million to cover our, our budget, to balance the budget? And we can't, I can't comment to that, because it's not. And we can't, I can't comment to that, because it's not actually happened. So there's been no money been returned. It's just a budgeting. What we forecasted in revenue plus the transfers came in at a different number than what had actually happened. So I wanted that to be out there, so folks know that we don't have a pile of money sitting here that we're able to really use in any way.
Thank you for reading that. Is there any other announcements that you gotta make? That was it?
That's really it. The Hapo is, thing is gonna be really important, so you'll be seeing a flurry of emails and activity on that, because we've gotta get that grant.
Because that is a timely, and you and I have talked about that. And so please, we ask everybody that needs to participate and interact, do. It's timely. It's basically a three million dollar grant, and if we don't get this turned in on time, we lose it. And we're planning on that money to be used for the arena side HVAC, so we need that money. We need to get that, so we can get the air conditioner put on the arena side. Commissioner Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had a CCOM Task Force meeting last week, and the CCOM Task Force meeting is the, is kind of the narrower group that is considering if CCOM were to become a standalone organization, how does that process look? So it's just systematically walking through how to make an organization standalone. It is, as we've been going through it, we're trying to address all the different components along the way of what that would look like, and then eventually, that task force meeting that's made up of law, fire, the counties, the cities, all of the jurisdictions. There's twenty-three organizations that use CCOM. And so this last week, the thing that we were wrestling with is how to appropriately fund this organization as far as who pays what, how, and how do you explain that? So in that room last week was probably twenty-five, between twenty-five and thirty people. And so the question was asked, is can anybody explain the payment structure today? And nobody knows how to explain the payment structure as it exists today. And so what has happened over time is there was a payment structure, and then they made a carve-out for this, and they adjusted here, and it's gotten to the point where that it's operating as it is today, but you just can't explain it. And so as we've wrestled through this, one of the things that we're trying to do is make it as simple as we can and make it proportionally fair to the organizations. So what we've identified is that there's, there needs to be basically four different payment structures, possibly five, and so I'll try to just give a kind of a brief explanation of what that looks like. So you have the big five, Benton and Franklin Counties, Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland is the big five that own the organization. And so they are classified as an owner. So then you would have an owner organization, and then the ones that would use that would be law and fire. So you have owner organization, law, owner organization, fire. And then, for instance, City of Pasco, Franklin County doesn't have, we don't, we don't have a fire department within our purview, but we have districts within our purview. But the City of Pasco does have fire. So Pasco would have, as an owner, they would have law and fire within theirs. And of course Franklin County would have law. And so you would have owner, law and fire, and then you would have user, law and fire. So the way that the experts have been presenting it, they believe that that's the four ownership structure and user structures that they're, you know, that they're potentially could be. So then the potential fifth that for consideration is when a, when an organization such as a Public Works or, you know, the Department of Energy, or a public utility, or somebody like that were to use it, which is not one of the primary, you know, if they wanted to have access to the system, that there would potentially be another way like that. So really appreciate all the experts in the room. So this last week, a lot of the financial people from, we had Mr. Ryan out of our Auditor's Office was there, and they're, you know, providing insight into how to do this fairly and equitably. And so really, really, a lot of heavy wrestling that takes place in that room as, you know, all the different ideas are brought and concerns are brought. So yeah, I'm, I've been impressed with the process and the way we've been going through this. So we'll try to bring information as we, as we start to narrow the, narrow the process.
Questions? Can you take away?
Sure.
So just, just, West Richland, Prosser, Connel, how are they gonna interact with this? Are they gonna be?
They would be, they currently use CCOM, and they are a user agency, so their fee structure would be different than an owner's structure.
As well as our county EMS and our county firefighters.
Yep. Our hospital district, our five fire districts in Franklin County, all of that would be not a owner-user, but it would be, you know, a, to rent access to the system essentially. And so there's, it's really a lot to wrestle through because of there not being a way to articulate the way we do it today. So just to give you an idea of some of the, of the different things. So when, when there's a call for fire service, that call for fire service is given a number, and then if it's a large fire, that, let's say for argument's sake, that it's in Fire District Three in Franklin County. So if they call for assistance, and then Pasco Fire responds, and, you know, District Four responds, and whoever, it all goes underneath the same number as assigned, you know, that event is assigned one number. Now, if you take a similar scenario where that you have law, and if there is an outside, you know, if Pasco has a call, and they ask for assistance, and Franklin County would come, and, you know, Richland would come, or so forth, that gets assigned multiple numbers. So they're trying to identify, how do you proportionally allocate this cost to the different agencies is what they're trying to figure out? Because a law event or a fire event is, it's handled a different way. You know, if we're responding across the river in fire, they have, there's one event, and it's shown on theirs. So trying to break that down, how do you do it? So trying to break it down, is it, do you break the, so if you take the number that it costs to run CCOM and divide it by the events, when somebody calls 911, you know, trying to identify, how do we, how do we proportionally break that down? And so looking at some of the background, such as how the law agencies roughly do it pretty similar, but if you look at it proportionally the way we do it today, it's going to upset the system, so to speak, because if you do it strictly on a proportional share basis, it would increase Connel's proportionate share to a level that there's no way that they could carry that burden. So they're trying, we're trying to, and when I say we, very, very light on the my part of it, you know, I'm trying to learn it so that I can give you the report, but there's experts there that are, you know, trying to identify how to do this fairly and equitably, and understanding that there's some of these smaller agencies that could not proportionally pay their exact thing. And so it's, it's been really interesting. I really appreciate the people that have been really wrestling some of these hard questions. And my preference is we make things simpler as much as we can. Benton County is also, that is their position, that as much as we can make this simpler. And at the end of the day, we need to be able to describe, this is how we got to this conclusion. And it's wrestle, because we're trying to unscramble eggs that have been scrambled for a really long time.
So I would say yes, you mentioned it, make it simpler, but cost-effectively too. We gotta keep the costs down as much as we can with effective service. And my last question is, you keep mentioning wrestling and wrestling skills. How is your wrestling skills? Are you a good wrestler? I mean, are you gonna get in there and make it?
So, you know, last time it was me by myself, and I rolled my ankle over in a parking lot.
I know. I'm wondering if we shouldn't replace you with Commissioner Mullen, because I heard he's a good wrestler.
You know? So I think there's a country song that says, I ain't as good as I once was, but, you know, I'd be willing, you know, I'm willing to mix it up once in a while.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, that's, that's a, it really is something that we need to, we need to do the heavy work, the wrestling now as far as how we do this, so that when, when, when the next people, whoever they are, and whatever agency, it's a way that it can be explained that we can't do today. So just really appreciate all the people that are doing that.
Commissioner, if I may, just interject something just briefly. The only legal consideration there is that government accounting statute, which says that one government agency cannot provide services for another without receiving the full value of those services. So we want to make sure we're not running afoul of that. That would be the only considerate. So basically, the concern there would be that one agency's tax base is basically funding another agency's tax base.
And that is one of the things that we're trying to wrestle through, because it's disproportionate today, and to, if you just simply said, you know, we had three hundred and twenty-six thousand calls to CCOM, divided by whoever that call came from. You know, if we were to do it that way, it can't operate like that. It's, that's a very, very simple way of doing it. But, but an organization like Connel could not absorb, you know, what that would look like. And then there would be disproportionate benefits to others. And so with law and fire being the, a law call versus a fire call, they're disproportionately, you know, a fire call is much more heavy versus a law call on average. And so, yeah, so there, I appreciate that, because there is, there is some heavy, heavy work to be done of wrestling through to how to do this properly. So, meeting last week with the Hapo Center and the Tri-City Home Builders, kind of a debrief on the Tri-City's home show, have had a number of WASAC meetings, and then I've had a number of staff meetings. We've heard from our administrator. Have had quite a few meetings with him and phone calls as we wrestle through a couple of different items, the Hapo parking, the HVAC. And so on the Hapo parking, I'm not sure where we go from here. I think we've kind of wrestled through it, and my belief is that we had kind of come to somewhat of a direction, but I don't know what action we need to take. But I thought that, Craig, that maybe you were going to do this on behalf of, and manage the process, not that the county was gonna do the work, but was gonna manage the process. And so I'm not sure what we need to do.
And you're talking about the parking lot?
The parking lot?
Yes.
So whatever we need to do there, let's, let's get that underway. It's always better sooner rather than later. As concerning the HVAC, have, yeah, I think, I think Brian's got this handled, and it's just time is of the essence, so that we don't lose that, that funding that we, that we worked on. Another thing that I've been working hard on with Mr. Danzel is countywide economic development policy, better known locally as the Point O Nine Funds, and how do we, how do we manage that? Have been looking at a number of other counties and kind of the process that they go through. And so have really asked that our administrator worked through that, would believe that it'd be in our, the interest of our community to get a policy put in place. And so appreciate all your hard work on that. And then also last week had been Franklin Transit Board Meeting, and it was one of the simpler board meetings that we've had. Not a lot of work on the agenda there. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Commissioner Mullen.
So I had the Washington State Association of Counties meeting. I was able to attend about the first half of that, because it overlapped with another meeting that I had. Also, the out of that, one of the things to point to note would be that the road usage bills that on mileage, sounds like they've pretty much died. Chamber Commerce meeting on Monday. Randy Hayden from the port gave his report. Some of the topics out of that was Pasco now has ten direct flights out of Pasco, and will be starting a new phase of construction this fall on expanding the airport once again. It's about a twenty million dollar project for the first phase. If they can keep their flight retention, if they can grow it up slightly, then they would be looking at adding two more additional flights, one to Dallas-Fort Worth and one to Portland, Oregon. Out of the same meeting was a topic of the Dairy Gold. It's one of the largest plants in the U.S. for producing powdered milk, which will go to Asia, and producing butter that's going to the East Coast. Also, the Dairy Gold Project is the largest investment into Franklin County by a private company. And that's an eight billion dollar, I'm sorry, one billion dollar investment. And that's B billion with a million with a B. So that is a very large development that's coming into Franklin County, with thanks going to the port with Stephen McFarland and Randy Hayden headed up that project. Randy Hayden is retiring, and as the former Pasco port administrator, and, I'm sorry, is retiring, and the former Pasco administrator, Adam Lincoln, will be replacing him. Just want to note, too, that at the Hapo Center this weekend is the Custards Arts and Crafts Show, which is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, ten to seven. Also filled in some calls on people's property taxes, which are coming up here in the next few weeks. I don't want to mention their names, but I feel comfortable kind of going through it with mine, if there's no objection to that.
No objection here.
My personal property taxes, or my property taxes on my home have doubled in the last, what, maybe four or five years? It's now equivalent to four months of my house payments. I think that everybody in the county, we've done a great job of keeping costs down, and the employees do a fantastic job. When you look at other counties, we are very, we are staffed less than other counties around us, meaning that our employees are doing a fantastic job of keeping our county operating. Just out of, I'm just gonna mention some numbers here. So my property taxes used to be about forty-two hundred dollars.
Can I ask you how many acres with the house?
That's five acres.
Five acres with a house?
Yep. It's, there are now eighty-two hundred and sixty-one dollars for my property taxes, which, like I said, is equivalent to about four months of my house payments. Every time that, you know, there's a tax increase or a levy that goes out, because I keep hearing people talking about affordable housing. Well, when you increase property taxes, it's the same way as increasing minimum wage. Those costs are funneled down to your rent. So when your property taxes go up as a landlord, of course, it's gonna raise your rent. It's no different than raising a minimum wage. My belief, the only person that benefits out of raising minimum wage is the government, because their percentage stays the same. But the prices go up exponentially. So if you increase your minimum wage by two dollars, well, the employer has to raise his prices to cover that. And because most businesses work on percentages, it goes up exponentially. So I heard a really good comment on, on minimum wage. So when minimum wage was three dollars twenty-five cents an hour, you could go out and buy a set of tires for your pickup. You'd have to work a week, and that'd about cover the price. Well, now you're working almost a month to pay for that same set of tires. We're just on a course that's unsustainable. So I just feel that everybody should realize, whenever they vote for any type of tax increase, it affects everybody, including yourself. Maybe not directly, but when it comes to time to pay your rent, those prices are in there, same way as buying anything at your local stores, so. Didn't mean to rant and rave, but.
I like it. I'm letting you have the floor here for as long as you want, Commissioner Mullen. I'm liking what you're saying.
It's just, it's unsustainable. So when you look at this, I'm just gonna, like I said, I'll use my numbers. I don't, I don't care. So my gross tax is eighty-two sixty-one. The county road gets seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So when you think that your taxes are all going to repair the roads, I mean, they get such a small percentage of that. Just doing the math in my head, that's what, less than nine percent. Is that right?
Yep.
No, it's actually, anyway, okay. So current expense is what the county runs on. We get six hundred and thirty-three dollars of that eighty-two hundred dollars I pay in tax. Local schools get three thousand five hundred and forty dollars. State school gets thirteen ninety-one, I'm sorry, that's one thousand three hundred and ninety-one. And state also gets another seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And state also gets another seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The weed board gets nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Pest control gets six dollars and thirty cents. Mosquito board gets thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. And the conservation gets five dollars and fifty-two cents. I noticed like in Stevens County, they actually put a, put a wheel diagram that shows exactly where your property taxes go. And I know in the past I thought my taxes were high, and I didn't really delve into them too much, but when you do put it out and you see exactly where all those dollars are going, again, I say our county runs extremely lean. And when less than nine cents out of every dollar goes back into your county, it's time to take a hard look of, of where our tax dollars are going. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So my report for this last week was Ben Franklin Transit Meeting. And then Mr. Danzel and I had a meeting with Tom from Ben Franklin Transit, the director, as well as Kevin, and very good discussion. And brought forth the, the fact that the Columbia Basin Irrigation Project was granted to the veterans to be first in line to be able to buy and break out this ground from sagebrush and rattlesnakes and jackrabbits to farmland. And so we have a lot of veterans out north. Brought that up to the fact that the bus service, they would still have to come in to town to get on the bus to go to Walla Walla. And Tom, being as brilliant as he is, he brought up the fact that, hey, we got dialer ride. Maybe we can go out, pick them up, take them to Walla Walla, and then bring them back. Whether that happens or not, I said that would be incredible because our VSO made mention that it's pretty heartbreaking when you see an eighty-five-year-old woman driving an eighty-three-year-old man to the VA hospital. You're, you're putting both their lives in danger. I mean, my mom's ninety-three and still driving, and she's sharp as a tack, but she's exceptional. I mean, I don't know how she does it, but she is incredible. I think we need to help our veterans out as much as possible, and so I'm all for that or hiring via with some of those revenues that are coming into the Ben Franklin Transit to get these people over to, to and from the VA hospital. Had the agenda meeting with Mr. Danzel, and I, I just truly appreciate you stepping in and helping us out at this time. And I know that we're looking for another administrator, and you have put your hat in the ring, and I appreciate that. And I just want to thank you because you are incredibly gifted as far as what you do. And I thank you for what you're doing for us here. Hazard mitigation planning building, I thought was going to be a three or four-hour meeting, and it turned out to be about fifteen minutes because we were supposed to be in person, and I guess I didn't come over. So it was a short meeting, which was okay. Budget review meeting that Mr. Danzel talked about, and we had our first two months of January, February. And yes, we are behind in sales tax revenue. And our Treasury Department announced that, yes, people are using these bonds. The money's being used, the money's, the amount of money is going down. So the amount to invest and create revenue is also going away. So we're already starting to see, and Tim, thank you, he's already planning for the future. He says we need to start looking at if this continues, what we're going to do. And so we're going to start having quarterly budget reviews here in here as a workshop so we can all be abreast of what is, where we're at financially in this county. As Commissioner Mullen mentioned, we are running a really lean courthouse, and I'm proud of that because I also run a really lean farm, farming operation. It's just the family and I, so it's, it's what you got to do to survive. Want to bring up the unconstitutional pay to our prosecutor attorney. Still no answer, no reply from the Attorney General's Office. We are closing in on two years in June, and it's ridiculous we can't get a reply. And I've asked the other commissioners, maybe we need to move on, on our own. But we have to have the blessing of our PA that we can go outside and hire an attorney. And I'd be asking that at this time. And the last is, I'd just like to say that I had the privilege of doing a podcast with Dr. Thorpe. Dr. Thorpe is one of the first ones to step forward on the vaccines. He's in Florida. He's, he lives down there in Gulf Breeze, Florida. He wrote this book, and little did I know about this vaccine, but this vaccine, when it came out, third-term loss of pregnancy was four point seven percent. After the vaccine, it went to seventy-four percent. This is deadly. If anybody would like a book, I have, I think, nine or ten left here. He has autographed them. I'll write his address. He only asks, if you take this book and read it, to please send in a contribution because all the money's going to the victims that have been hurt by this vaccine. Unproven, never been FDA approved, never been approved, and it is a terrible tragedy. Then you'll read about it in here, a very good book. And I'd encourage you to pass it on to a neighbor, a friend. Educate the youth, because this isn't the first time this has happened. He goes back in the history of other drugs that they came out with, birth defects in children. When I was born, and I remember a neighbor with an arm that was missing, and it could have been from that. I don't know if the mother took that drug that they injected into people at the time. And I encourage you to get your education on this vaccine. Please educate yourself, but not only yourself, make sure you have the education for your children. Don't be putting something in their body that could hinder their ability to be a successful American in the future. And that concludes my report. So with that, we'll move down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment? Do we have anybody on the phone? Nope. No, no, oh, there's nobody downstairs. Okay.
Commissioner, there's a couple comments.
As stated last week, when I provided you the memorandum of income that came into the sheriff's office, and income that went out of the sheriff's office, and then the bottom-line number, I believe I used the terminology returning back to the county, to the budget or whatever. And I was clear to you that I had no idea where the money goes once it's done. The report is part of accreditation for the sheriff's office. It's a memo that's no different than this board's been getting since two thousand fifteen. When I do budgeting, we do an open, clear budget that far reaches any other budgets that are submitted for your approval. An interesting comment in Mr. Danzel's was, once an elected official is given money from the commissioners, it becomes their responsibility to, to monitor it and utilize it correctly. And that's what's done. So at the end, at the end of that, one point four million dollars is what we did not spend. And where it went is really immaterial to me, other than we are being open and transparent, and we are complying with accreditation standards for law enforcement agencies. CECOM, some of you weren't on the board when CECOM became into being, but in two thousand seventeen, this board entered an interlocal agreement and wrote his check for about one point five million dollars to become one of the five owners of CECOM, meaning CECOM was to become a standalone public facilities district. And they would monitor and take care of both the owners and users in the Bay County region for E-911. E-911, meaning that when you pick up a phone, what is your emergency? That's funded by the state one hundred percent. And everybody has the same access. When the person answers the phone, the question is, what is your emergency? And where do I need to direct this emergency to? That becomes the CECOM communication side of, of the issue. It's been ran by Bennett County, by Richland, currently still being ran by Richland. The numbers are, they're all over the board. There's never any agreement with that, but there's two sets of records, if you will, that generate calls. You have law records, as the commissioner, and then you have the fire, fire records that come in. And both of those have a different set of charging mechanisms or tracking mechanisms, and they will never blend together. Since that agreement, CECOM was supposed to be a standalone agency with a warm redundant backup center. Okay, and it was to be independently ran. When we signed that agreement, we essentially, again, might not be the right words, we laid off eighteen employees that ran E-911 operations in the county, and they were ran by the sheriff's office. Since then, well, this is where we've got to today. Today, we have a thirty-some million dollar upgrade that needs to take place in this county. I don't know how, how you divide the numbers and who pays what, but it has to be paid, and we're working down that process. The third thing that was supposed to happen is both counties were supposed to go together and put out a communications tax that was to be put to both sets of voters, and y'all see where we're at with that one. We had to try to do it ourselves, and we're going to have to try to do it again. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Morning Commissioners, John Rosnell, Franklin County Assessor. And Commissioner Mullen, I appreciate what you brought up. I appreciate you being willing to use your numbers because we can't just release numbers for individuals on that and the percentages. You had mentioned about a circular pie chart that would show the percentages or the amount of monies that were spent by or collected for each different taxing district. Very big misconception that the assessor's office assessed property to get more tax money for the commissioners or any other taxing district. We don't. We get the budgets from them, and then we have to make those budgets apply to all the properties. So on our website, Franklin County Assessor's website, underneath tax property or tax information, there are levy booklets for every single year. And in there, we have all the information for every taxing entity and how much money they get. We're responsible to dibby out or calculate the treasurer that gives them the money, collects it. But we calculate what the levy rate would be and what their dollars are. And I would really encourage people to go take a look at that and see exactly where are the dollars going? What taxing districts get what? When I first came into office, the county got about twelve percent of the overall property taxes to operate this county. That would be what you commissioners would use for your budgets. Right now, it's about nine and a half percent. The county has been extremely diligent on their money, been frugal. The majority of the increases are because of what the people have actually voted for. And then we're statutorily required to calculate that in. So again, our assessor's office definitely has all of that data. We even have that nice little circular chart you were talking about that gives the percentages. That's on there as well. So I'd encourage people to go get in there, look at that, and see really where is the money being spent that property taxes are being collected? Because all we do is get the budgets from the different taxing districts and the statutory requirements and apply it. So then people are paying what's their share. And my personal property taxes have doubled since I bought in Franklin County in two thousand eighteen till now. So I totally understand and feel exactly where you're at. So anyway, just wanted to share that.
I know we're not supposed to comment, but I do appreciate your comments on that and on your tax form. It does say that voter-approved tax, forty-two point eight five nine percent. So I just want to point out that everybody in the county, I think, is doing a fabulous job of keeping costs down and hardworking. Because if you look at other counties, we do employ less than neighboring counties are the same size. But the tax increases, I just wanted to make sure that everyone realized that out of your tax dollars that you're spending on your property taxes, the county is getting less than nine cents for every dollar spent. So it's not like the county is blowing the money. But a lot of consideration should be taken in when you vote. And I encourage everybody to vote and educate themselves. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment?
I'm Joel Prannell. I live here in Franklin County. And yeah, and all the, the prices of taxes, they've gone up so heavy that, I mean, my son's got a piece, forty acres and a new home. But man, you got to work four months out of the year just to try to pay that to cover for them taxes. I mean, the school taxes are so high now that, what is it? I don't know. Forty percent, fifty percent of your taxes are whole school stuff? And none of my kids ever went to the, the public school. They all were homeschooled, and we don't get any kickback. And that's our state or federal and all the other mess. And all my kids are homeschooled and all theirs, and they're still paying all the taxes and don't get any benefit out of that at all. And so, and even the, the price of, of all the wages have gone up so high. We have twelve employees there at the farm, working manufacturing model trains and all the parts. It's killing us. And then the state says they want to go to what, thirty-five in the next so many years? I mean, it's, it is way up there. It's already up so high now that our percentage is down to less than five percent in gain on our manufacturing. You can't stay alive. I mean, it's killing us. I'm looking at, I told my mom and all the family, I'm like, maybe we should all up and move. Move to a state that isn't killing us. I know that the county looks like they're running lean. At least you're paying attention to some of the budget on your end, or if it was prior to your end. So we just have a hard time out there. So I don't know if you guys look into more of that and see why, and what we can do to fight the, the steep incline of the every year, dollar and a half, dollar something on wage increase. It's just, I mean, it's like this. I got to raise three to five percent for product every year. We will price ourselves out. The state will lose more money. You guys will lose more money. We don't even pay a sales tax to Franklin County for about ninety-five percent of our sales. You lose that. The state took it away from you, online sales. Nope, you don't get it. It goes somewhere else. It goes to Seattle, goes to another part of the country. All them sales are gone. That's why you say the revenue has gone down? You're losing it. And that's because we didn't fight it in our legislation where they drove it to the bigger population in our state alone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just address a couple of things real quickly and finish up. Franklin County, none of you commissioners nor any elected official in this county sets those taxes as high as this gentleman just mentioned. It actually is over forty-seven percent. It's over seventy percent of the property taxes in this county go to state and local schools, over seventy percent. Less than thirty percent goes to hospital districts, fire districts, the individual cities, the county to operate. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, and I'm not taking a pro or negative on it. I just want you to understand that, that none of you, other than your personal budgets, which is like I said, about nine, nine and a half percent of the overall, no elected official in this county has any control over that. The majority of it has been voted in, or the state has mandated it.
Is there anybody else for public comment? And we don't have anybody on the phone. So at this time, I'll close public comment. And we need an executive session, correct, Jeff?
That is correct, Chair. We do have need for an executive session, RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one I, triple I. That would be litigation or legal risks of a proposed action. We will need twenty minutes with myself, Ms. Lloyd, the board, Mr. Danzel, as well as the clerks of the board.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll recess into executive session. If anybody would like one of these books, please come forward, and I'll hand it to you.
Let's just do our executive session downstairs.
Okay.
Send him a donation. You bet. He's a great man.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you.
We're going to take our executive session downstairs, so you're welcome to stay in the room.
the room.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my seat. This is your first time. There you go. I'm glad that you're here.
All right. Nice to meet you.
We have come out of these executive sessions with no decisions being made, and at this time, I will adjourn the meeting. And as soon as my fellow commissioners return, we will recess for two minutes until my fellow commissioners return. So we are back from recess, and we are now going to call the workshop to order and ask for approval of the workshop agenda, one item, presentation on benefits discussion.
Do we want to adopt the agenda?
Yes.
So Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the workshop agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion of second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll move down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment on the one and only item on the workshop? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the presentation of the benefits discussion. Ms. Wilder.
Just since I see it's not listed on the agenda, there will be three presentations for you. First will be up Alliant, and then it will be Gallagher, and then Rich will be here to discuss the VIBA.
Okay.
So we'll just roll one to the other.
All right. Thank you. So proceed. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. My name's Sean Cecilia. I'm with Alliant Insurance out of Spokane, Washington. This is Joe Roberts and Berkeley Phillips from our office. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and thank you very much for taking the time. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Just want to show you who our team is, who we've assembled for your group today. Clayton Simonson is also on the team. He couldn't be here today because he had a conflict, but he is a person that would also be working with you. And in addition to that, we've got some other experts that we have out of the Spokane office that we routinely assign to all the teams that we work with. Pharmacy team, underwriting team, we have seven underwriters just in the Spokane office for our large self-funded groups, and then legal compliance, health and productivity. So that's kind of our team. I want to just explain who that was. Next, we wanted to give you, just to show you a listing, just a little bit about our story in terms of some of the groups that we work with. I want to demonstrate, or just at least show you that we work with groups that are similarly situated to yourselves. Municipal, government, most all of these groups, not all of them, but most of them have a VIBA in place and have for several years. Most of these groups, we've worked with for over a decade, some 20-plus years. So like you, they have, you know, multiple different bargaining units, very complex groups. Most of them are self-funded, are looking at self-funded, or have explored that, and are on a certain evolution. Most of them have, you know, like I said, multiple different bargaining units that they work with, and so very similar to you guys in size and scope. The challenge, so we've been the benefactor of actually having seen the other presentations because they're, as you guys know, broadcast, and so the challenges, we thought about how to present this information to you today was, you know, we're trying to do it in a meaningful manner and not simply regurgitate everything that you've already heard multiple different times. So we wanted to use the time wisely. So we're going to stick within the scope pretty rigidly in terms of the things that you had asked for, like the PEB, the WCIF, ICRA, self-funding. So we'll stick to those topics. But what I'll say is, I'll try to point out a couple different things that maybe you have not heard, right? Maybe things, because looking at the presentations that everybody's done, I think everybody, looking back, did a really good job. I think the information that you've been given has been disseminated well. I think all the brokers gave you good advice, but I think, you know, we might just pick apart one or two things and almost remove ourselves to the certain point to provide the most value to you. I'm kind of looking at this as, okay, well, if you had hired a consultant to help you hire a consultant, what would they tell you, right? And so my goal today is to at least leave you with some advice. If we're having a cup of coffee and you say, hey, Sean, what do you think? I'd hopefully tell you, hey, here's what I think. Here's my 10 cents. So we're going to move through some of these pretty quickly. So the PEB is the first thing that you wanted to talk about. Large trust association, they have 233,000 lives currently. You guys would qualify. You have to apply to be in the PEB. Most people that meet the eligibility criterion are accepted, but you still have to apply. One of the other brokers, I can't remember who, but they had made the comment, or they had said, hey, normally with larger groups, with larger numbers, you're able to spread your risk better and lower, typically lower your rates because you've got a more attractive, you know, more attractive offer. You've got larger numbers, love large numbers. And I agree with what that person said. That makes sense, right? That's typically the case. We looked at the PEB rates because the way you enter the PEB, you apply, and if you're accepted, they have rates for counties, and those are publicly available rates. And what I would say is, when we looked at those rates versus where you're currently at, your current structure, your current rating structure on your Primera fully insured plan is better. It's lower than the current PEB published rates. And so I would say to you guys, you've probably, at this particular point in time, it's not to say that it's not something you wouldn't consider in the future, but at this particular time, I think you've checked that box in terms of due diligence. You're enjoying a better rating structure than you would with the PEB right now. And frankly, you're better positioned to receive information as it relates specific to your group. And when I say information, you know how your group's performing. So you get information on the paid loss. You get information on large claims. You get information on the top 30 RX drugs that are spent. And that allows you to know whether it's a good time, or when it might be a good time, to look at self-funding. And so what I would say on that is, I think, right now, that's one of the things, when you enter one of these large trusts or associations, there are certain things that you give up. You give up control, you give up some autonomy, you give up the ability to make different plan design changes, and different levers that you might want to have as a county to remain flexible to affect change, where and when you need to affect change on cost or benefits. And so for some folks, it's a good fit, but right now for the PEB, just looking, stepping back and looking at it, you guys are in a better spot right now, right? Had you shown the PEB enough?
I did.
Perfect. Okay. ICRA. I'm not going to go back through, and I think you guys understand what the ICRA is, inasmuch that it's a health reimbursement arrangement where you all go ahead and put money into an account, and individuals go to the individual market to purchase insurance, right? And so I think there's pros and cons, and I've listed those there for you, and I'll let you go through them as you see fit. I'll just point out a couple. There's just a couple things that I didn't hear in some of the other meetings. One of those things I didn't hear was that, you know, older workers have the chance to pay more in the individual market than they do in the group-sponsored market, right? And when I think about that for the counties and the municipal groups that I work on, to me, the ICRA doesn't make sense for a county or somebody in your space, because I just personally, I think groups such as yourselves have been historically more egalitarian in nature. And what I mean by that is that you take care of your own, right? And what one person gets, a lot of times, the other person, you know, in that same bargaining unit is able to get and to achieve. And I think philosophically, I think it doesn't necessarily fit, in my opinion, with a county, or a city, or municipality. We see it popular in some of the final thoughts that you'll see, we see it popular for groups in hospitality, retail, different industries such as that. I think if the county were to implement something like this, you'd be an outlier amongst your peers, and it would be something that would put you outside of the norm. And then sending those individuals to the market to purchase it on their own volition, albeit I'm sure the vendor has some sort of support system to try to help them purchase coverage, a little bit different than, I think, a lot different for a group of folks that have historically, in these types of environments, we've seen trade wages for benefits. Benefits are very, very important. So I just don't see it as a good fit personally for the county. I just wanted to share that.
I do think that there was one example, too, that was provided to you from one of the presentations where the broker mentioned that perhaps, you know, a doctor for a specific disease that was located in another state might be out of network. We tend to disagree with that. We don't necessarily think that that would be the case. And perhaps a better example of it would be, there are network challenges, but a better example would be to think about your dependent children who live out of state. When it's someone's dependent child who's going to school at college, they're not going to have any primary care providers. They're not going to have access to those benefits that they would if they were in the state of Washington.
We just wanted to share with you our thoughts or insights on how a program like that might be on the opposite, certainly the opposite end of the spectrum of what you're currently doing, quite different than what folks are currently used to, and we think that a move to something like that might make attraction retention challenging.
Any questions?
I have one. The very first slide you came up with, you have the people that you're covering at this time, and you said they all have a VIBA.
Most of those groups have VIBAs in place, yeah.
Are they all consistent with the amount of money in the VIBA?
No, there's...
What's the highest one that you have, contribution to VIBA?
That would probably be one of the group, one of the firefighter groups as part of the left trust, and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that amount is, but it's probably in that group, something that had been negotiated.
This is one of the things that we're trying to alleviate here, is because we've got this VIBA contribution for people, that we're paying people not to take our insurance.
Yeah.
So and it's costing the county almost as much as the insurance, or as much?
It's 50% of your cost, is the way we've calculated. And so that's one of the things we wanted to talk about, too, is to say, you know, we're talking to you today about a variety of different medical programs, and you've been told about some other medical programs, and even shown a soft quote for self-insurance, but what I would say is, it's really just 50% of your problem. You could solve that issue, and to be honest with you, your current medical program is actually running really, really well. And I think you're probably closer to a solution on your medical insurance than further away. I think you're actually pretty close to a solution that's very, very good for you. What I would say is that you need to handle that, or in conjunction with, in tandem with, at the same time, the VIBA contributions. And you need to look and dig into those, and we've got a slide on bargaining a little bit later, and VIBA a little bit later, but since you asked, just kind of skip ahead. I think that's, those are the kind of discussions, and the devil's in the details. You need to dig into those contracts and say, okay, you know, when do these groups bargain? What are you able to change? Is there reopen or language? When does that reopen or language come up? Do they bargain all at the same time? Or do they bargain separately? Does your largest union go first, get the best possible deal? Everybody then follows and tries to match that deal? And so those are the types of questions. I mean, you could solve your medical program. We could sit up here and say, hey, you need to be self-funded with Primera, and, you know, okay, great, you got that solution, but what does that mean for the VIBA that's outstanding? That's really 50% of your problem. And what we're going to say later, and again, I'll just skip to, because you asked the question, but, you know, we look in cooper, we try to work in cooperation with, and try to find win-win solutions best we can. I think someone had told you, and I can't remember who, because I think you'd asked the question about the VIBA as well, and they said, you know, what would you do? And they said, I think, they said, don't quote me, but I think they said rip the Band-Aid off. And I get what they mean.
We're trying.
But, yeah, but I guess my point is, I don't know that, it's a little more complicated than that. In my mind, you have to dig into those contracts and find out what you can do, and then how you work in cooperation with, and walk alongside those groups to show them, you know, agnostically, hey, here's the facts, here's the math behind this equation. How are we going to, you know, solve this together? Those are the types of discussions that we've had that have typically been the most successful for both parties, and that's really what we're trying to get at, long-term solution for both parties.
That's what we're trying to do, and we're going through some of that right now, contracts, so I was hoping you might give us the answer.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have copies of those contracts, right? We don't know what it says inside of there. We don't have your data either. So from a certain standpoint, we, as well as, you know, some of the other brokers that will present later today, or that have already presented, don't have your data. Sort of a little bit of a disadvantage, but we can make some assumptions about the medical based on some of the stuff that's happened historically. But the VIBA, really, it's 50% of the issue.
And I got to be honest with you, none of these commissioners, none of us were part of that board at this time. We're just trying to fix this problem.
We were told you had a magic solution, so that's what we're just waiting to hear.
Well, let's keep going. Let's keep going, fingers crossed. I really wanted to answer your questions, and then kind of talk to you about, we'll talk about the VIBA a little later. The WCIF, you had asked about that. It's much like the PEB in that it's a, you know, large trust association type business. A little bit, I would describe it a little more flexible than the PEB in terms... A little bit, I would describe it a little more flexible than the PEB in terms, they have several more medical programs. The PEB has about four medical programs for the UMP plan and about three Kaiser plans. They have about 42 medical programs. We've had several really good conversations with Rochelle Tolliver at the WCIF. They're very, you used to have your business with them. They want you back. Would be a nice way to say it. They really would like to provide you with a proposal with a quote. Again, one of the things that I would say about going into an association plan is you give up some level of control, visibility, autonomy. You don't get those experience reports anymore on an individual basis because you're part of a larger trust. One of the differences between the WCIF and the PEB is that we know what the PEB rates are, right? And you know, they're, they're published. And so we can tell you now whether they're competitive to your current structure because they're the same for everybody. The WCIF is initially underwritten, right? So when you initially apply, they underwrite you, give you a rate, and then on the subsequent years, you get whatever the, whatever the bump is that the entire trust gets going forward. It's a 3%, you get a 3%. So we can't tell you currently whether they're competitive to you guys or not. But one of the questions we ask, since they're also underwritten by Primera is does parity rating apply? Parity is the insurance company's way of saying, hey, we're not going to cannibalize our own business, right? So if we have a product, we write Primera direct and we also then write maybe Primera through one of our associations. We're not going to rob Peter to pay Paul. We're not going to lower the rates on one place only to, to get a more competitive rate, you know, somewhere else. We're just, you know, trading membership, right? So the answer that Rochelle gave me to that question is like, well, hey, does parity apply, right? They're already with Primera. And then she said parity applies on a case-by-case basis, which tells me that there's probably a little bit of wiggle room with underwriting. That's how I interpret that. I, I worked at Primera for several years. And sometimes they have a little bit of leeway one way or the other in terms of what they might be able to do. But I guess what I'm saying is I think it's probably, the price would probably be pretty close to where you're at now if they indeed apply parity. And so I think there's probably, again, it, it wouldn't hurt to look at it, but again, you're now part of a larger trust and you lose some opportunity to maybe take advantage of some surplus if you were partially self-funded, level funded or, or self-funded. Which I think, as you guys have heard in the past, is probably, might be a good direction for you to head, right? So I'm going to move on from that and then go quickly to fully insured. This is what you guys are now. So easiest, easiest to understand, you pay premiums, the insurance company pays claims. So if you perform poorly, they eat the losses. If you perform great, they keep the surplus, right? They keep the gains. And, you know, you do get some experience based on your size, but not necessarily to the level of detail that you might otherwise be able to achieve. So I think it's a, it's, it's, it's a safe, conservative, you know, pretty straightforward approach, right? Next thing I wanted to talk about real quick is level funding. It's called level funding, partially self-funded or some folks might even refer to it as whatever the, whatever the various insurance company has, calls their product, which so Primera calls it OptiFlex, which would be a level funded product. Level funding, real simply, it looks and feels like a fully insured plan and that there are no cash flow fluctuations. It's just you pay your bill, right? Straight across based on enrollment. And at the end of the year, you settle up. And so at the end of the year, if you perform below a certain loss ratio, then you're eligible for a surplus. You're eligible for that surplus only if you then renew with that carrier. So you have to renew with said carrier in order to get the surplus. And then you also have to wait for incurred but not reported claims to process, to run out. And that typically, because claims are not incurred and paid in the same day, there's a tail. And so typically that's a 90-day window. So you're paid typically, if it's a January to January, you might get that payment, if there is any, in April. And that's typically a 50-50 split, right? For most contracts, it's a 50-50 split if there's a surplus, right? And so you do get a, a level of reporting, that's a pretty good reporting package. So you have visibility into, into a lot of those things. I think it's a good, somebody had mentioned, one of the other brokers had mentioned it's a good stepping stone. I agree with that statement. I agree with that person. I can't remember who said that, but it is a good stepping stone. We have a lot of groups that use it as a transition to a fully self-funded plan, ultimately to a fully self-funded plan. It's, it's not a perfect mousetrap, but it is, it's a good way to take advantage of, of your, of your gains. And what I would tell you, we, again, we don't, we don't have the benefit of having your actual experience, but it sounds like you guys had a 9% cap through Primera the year before and you got a 2% renewal. Having worked at Primera again, that's not in their playbook. They don't typically do that. I don't see that as routine. If you have a 9% cap, there's a good chance that that is, that your renewal is going to be at, at that 9% or very close to. That tells me directionally, just anecdotally, that you're probably performing really well. Again, we don't have the experience, but in looking at the first presentation, you were provided with a self-funded quote. And I believe that person showed you claims at the maximum liability on a self-funded proposal that are pretty competitive. If I recall correctly, pretty competitive to where you're currently at. So some of these indicators tell me that you're performing well and that, you know, taking on some of your own risk, betting on yourself, whether it's level funded or self-funded could make sense, right? Could make, might make a lot of sense. What I would say is one of the brokers too, said different, different brokers have different programs and that's true, that's true, right? So whether it's a refunding contract on a self-funded stop-loss program or whether it's a level funded program, you know, we have different programs as well. I think the second broker, one of them mentioned that, hey, they, we've got our own level funded program. So we have something that's very, very, you know, unique to us as well, that provides up to a 60% refund in certain cases. So just, I want to come back to that point later, that different brokers have different programs. So just tuck that thought away.
Just a couple of things to add on the level funded piece. Sean mentioned the stepping stone. One of the reasons it is a great, you know, great stepping stone to move into self-funding is because you are getting more data. So the data that the carriers provide on a level funded product is much more detailed, more granular. You're going to be able to make a better decision on what's best for the county moving forward. But you do want to be cautious of the renewals. So a lot of these are built on a self-funded chassis. So you may get a good first year quote, but after that, they're going to rate the plan based off of maximum claims. So they rated it 125% of expected. So a lot of times we see renewals under these contracts that are a lot higher. The last thing I want to mention on this, and I know that, I think this was brought up in an earlier discussion as well, is getting approval from the state risk manager. So on a self-funded basis, you do have to submit for approval. On a level funded basis, we don't believe you have to, but like Sean mentioned, these contracts can be different. And some of them, since they are on a self-funded platform, it is smart to check with the risk, risk manager and make sure that the contract allows for you guys to proceed without any sort of reserve requirements.
We called the state risk manager, spoke to them. And then what they had said on, as it relates to a level funded contract, they had said, provide us with a contract that the group is intending on, on going to, if it's a level funded contract. And we will then send you a letter back that says whether or not you actually need to work towards having those reserves and whether you're subject to our oversight. They said, it doesn't sound like you would be, but send us the contract, we'll review it. And then send the, whatever the county is, a letter for their documentation purposes. So that's something that, whatever you all decide to do, that if you do go level funded, might be an easier task. Just get that contract off to them. Make sure you get a, a letter back from them telling them that you are subject or you're not subject on a level funded basis. They don't think you are. They also said that the approval process, in the event that the ego self-funded is about 90 days. So max time, and they said that's the maximum time that they take to review that would be 90 days from the time of your submission. So just something to keep in mind, I think you were told that by somebody, you needed to have a decision pretty quickly in April. I think you might have a little more time than that if you wanted to mull things over. So based on our conversation with them. So let's go to self-funded. Self-funded, just like it says, you pay premiums. Rather you pay the claims of the members and then you purchase stop-loss on top of that. So stop-loss for catastrophic losses, whether that's, you know, for specific insurance. And also stop-loss in the aggregate for all losses that might exceed, you know, a certain threshold of what they expect your claims to exceed. There's several things we like about self-funding. And again, we would need the data and the information to tell you whether it's a right, you know, decision for you guys. But several things we like about it is that, you know, number one, you have control of your plan. You have complete insight into the experience. You have complete flexibility in terms of plan design, copays, deductibles, max out of pocket, allowing you to do different things, you know, for every rate there's a risk and allows you to change things up in order to get to the price point that you need to get to. And also you realize any surplus that you might have, you're realizing that surplus in real time, right? Because unlike a fully insured or level funded quote where your premiums each month are, are static, are the same, right? Your, your costs on a self-funded plan will fluctuate based on, on performance. And so that's why whenever a group is going or looking at a self-funded arrangement, we always ask ourselves, we say, okay, well, how steady is the enrollment, right? We'd like to see steady enrollment on a self-funded plan. And what do the cash reserves look like for the predictability of payment? We like to see predictability of payment. And so one of the things, just kind of tying this to the VIBA, as Mr. Didier said earlier, you know, we've got several waivers on, on the VIBA is if you were to go to a self-funded plan, and we're not saying that's not a good idea or that you shouldn't. But in the event that you go to a self-funded plan and then at the same time, you're working on VIBA and you're able to change some of those contributions, we think it's, it's important to be thoughtful and aware of possible migration back to the medical plan, right? So right now you have a pretty known risk. You have a pretty stable, steady waivers, right, on those people that are not enrolling. If you go to a self-funded plan and then are successful with some of those negotiations and people now decide, okay, you know what, I'm going to jump back on the plan. That's an unknown risk, right, that you didn't have before. We're not saying that's not a good idea or a deal killer. I think what we're saying is that go into that decision eyes wide open and know what that risk is. And that's why some of the stuff, I think we, we did a project or worked last year on a couple of things for some modeling to show, you know, just some modeling, if this, then that scenarios, what-if scenarios in the event that, you know, we changed the VIBA contribution by X amount and we broke it out by bargaining unit. Have, have everybody in a different bargaining unit, what would the possible migration back to the plan be? And what would, what would the financial implication be? So that's something that we want to, you know, just as you cautiously approach, you know, self-funding. And again, we think it's, all indications are that it could be very, very good for you, make a lot of sense. Just be aware that, you know, every action has a reaction, right? And so as you're tackling these two, these two things at the same time, what medical program we should be on and how do we control VIBA from, from a cost and still provide a benefit and have it be a win-win for us and employees? Beware that migration issue out there, right? So.
I think that's one of the reasons that on our final thought, we put for you that the ordering of your solution is important.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I meant by that is that, you know, how you, how you plan this should be, you know, in cooperation with one another. But there are several things that, you know, we would say, you know, self-funding makes a heck of a lot of sense. VIBA, Joe, do you want to?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I wanted to give an example of why some of the things that you're able to do or able to control when you're self-funded. And this is a real example. This is a school district we work with in Oregon. They had a person, an individual that was driving to OHSU about an hour, hour there, hour back from their house, twice a week for infusion therapy, right? And you're probably like most groups that 90% of your costs are probably accumulated by actually 10% of, of your, of your claimants, right? That's, that's just that typically the numbers we see. Because based on, you know, kind of the large claim phenomenon, what I'll describe, just claims are bigger. Pharmacy is just a, a bigger cost than it ever has been. So this person was doing an infusion and we're, we were able to identify them from our data analytics. So our underwriters were able to identify this person. We brought it to, we did some research, brought it to the attention of the TPA that this particular client had hired. And we reached out to them through the care management program and we, and the care management nurse essentially reached out to the person and said, hey, would, would it be more convenient for you to have this infusion therapy in your home and you not having to drive to OHSU? So just moving that side of service for that one claimant saved about $500,000 from them not having the same exact drug done in-home versus done at Oregon Health Sciences University, right? And that's just a quick example of what you can control and affect from a pricing standpoint and change standpoint on your self-funded medical program. And those are the types of, and that's why we've got seven underwriters sitting in our Spokane office. Perfect example. So that's one of the reasons why we like self-funding, right?
So VIBA contribution, I had talked about this a little earlier. Joe, you want to?
Yeah, I'm actually going to give a little background on this. Last year, we had the privilege of working with Margot and her team for a few months. They brought us in really to look at some of the issues that they were having and some of the concerns. We met with them. We then went back and we created this customized modeler where basically we can help give a little bit of look into the future. If you pull this lever, what will happen? What Sean was talking about, every action has a reaction. How we can predict a little bit of the migration. I'll let Joe talk more about it since he actually built this.
Yeah. So, you know, the VIBA is obviously the most, it sounds like the most pressing issue. I think at the same time, you would want to pay attention to the contributions, right? A previous broker, I think, mentioned that you guys with the VIBA had some adverse selection risk, which is absolutely true. One of the things that we identified is the potential for adverse selection, just with your contributions, regardless of the VIBA. So when we look at it now, the way it's set up, because you have a defined contribution, the rates are tiered. Some of these families, just to add one child, right, the incremental cost of adding one child can be anywhere from $500 to $900. We want those children on the plan. That's good for the plan long-term. It builds a sustainable plan. It's better for you guys, especially as you move into the self-funded environment. What you see here, this is just a sample of some of our, our modelers. So what we do, you know, we work with you guys. Commissioner Bauman, I wish we had all the answers, but this is, this is what we're using. We would work with you guys to determine as you make changes to the VIBA or to the contributions. Let's say you use percentage of premium versus defined contribution. What does that do to the enrollment? You know, obviously the waivers could come on. Do people move plans? What are the increases going to look like by plan? And these can all be done in real time. It helps you guys make decisions quickly. We can break this out by bargaining group. We can do it as a whole. It just makes the process much more seamless.
Yeah. Mr. Danzel.
Yeah, real quick question on that. So with the, you mentioned the bargaining units and the, and the unions. The one thing that I've never heard discussed that I think needs to be discussed is when you do self-insured, what that means to the actual plan itself, because I saw that happen before where, yes, the contributions made more fiscal sense, but I don't know that the bargaining units would accept the out of, the total out-of-pocket expense to the individual. That goes up under a self-insured plan. So can you speak to that or any of the problems that you've had with that? Because I saw that for sure.
Yeah. So you would have, under any kind of scenario that we would build for the county, you would have control over the total liability. We wouldn't leave the maximum exposure or liability up to somebody else to decide, albeit a carrier or anyone else. So we would set that threshold at whatever that agreed-upon amount is. So you would have, you would have control over that. Those are the type arrangements that, that, you know, we would put in place. You might, and so you might be referring to something, it almost sounds like a donut hole, or it sounds like maybe it's an aggregating specific type of, potential type of issue. But that's, we, we don't have a plan in place that would leave, you know, we're going to show you something that's apples to apples. You know, we're not going to, your, your total loss, you know, would be understood what that amount is.
And are you speaking to the actual member cost share, like the deductible out-of-pocket?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, okay. So we, we could, you could match the plan design, right? A lot of these. A lot of these administrators, you can customize it any way you want, so we could make sure the out-of-pocket and the risk for the individual, employees, members is no higher than it currently is.
Okay, that's what I was kind of getting at, because I've seen where it didn't. And it was gonna be, yes, you'll be covered, yes, your VIBA contribution will stay similar, but the quality of your healthcare plan dropped significantly and you owe a bunch of more out-of-pocket expenses. I'm sure you're familiar with that.
It should actually be blind to the employees if you do it right. So, whether you're on a Primera fully insured chassis or a Primera self-funded chassis, that process should be blind, right, to them. I mean, you can publish or tell them, there's no harm in that, that, "Hey, yeah, we're self-funded." But the actual member experience, the network should be the same if you set it up correctly, the plan should adjudicate the same if you set it up correctly. They're gonna have this, you know, similar ID card, similar customer service number, all that is the same. It's just the funding mechanism behind it is slightly different, right? So, if you do it right, they should not experience anything like you've described.
Any questions?
So, we had kind of skipped ahead to this earlier, you know, bargaining, again, I think, you know, the one thing I want to focus on is what we have at the bottom again, win-win. We're trying to create solutions that are good for all parties, right? Those, the success stories that I've seen have been when, you know, and a lot of times we use facts, we try to use facts, data, and logic to explain the current financial position of where we're at and what's possible, what's feasible. And we're, you know, agnostically, hand-in-hand with folks in order to try to reach, you know, agreements. And so, but these are the important questions, and one of the things that, you know, a lot of people give you a lot of good advice in terms of, you know, hey, you should be self-funded, or, you know, these are what all these different programs mean, but, you know, again, VIBA is 50% of the issue here, and I think it deserves a lot of attention, right? So, that's one of the things that, that's why we created the modeler, and one of the reasons we wanted to potentially show you, show that to you at a later date. Just some final recommendations. As we had established earlier, you know, different brokers have different programs, you know. Typically, our market for medical insurance, unlike property and casualty insurance, where property and casualty folks can actually pick a market and they're like, "Okay, I get this market, you get that market." Typically, our market is what I would classify as perfectly competitive. What I mean by that is, my price is the same as these guy's price is the same as the next person's price, notwithstanding commission, right? So, a lot of times you end up picking, "Hey, I like this person, or I wanna work with this person, I get a good feeling about this guy." But when you get to a certain size and complexity, you know, different brokers actually have the ability to build different programs. And I think the first person, one of the first people said that to you too, "Hey, everyone's gonna have their own different program, come in." And then, I think somebody else had said, "Hey, I've got my own level-funded program." And then, we had told you, "Hey, we've got, you know, different programs," and I'm sure the guys that are going after us and gals are gonna tell you something similar, "Hey, we've got our own program." And so, I just, I go back to that, and I also go back to the fact that, you know, if you do go self-funding, which I think is definitely something you should really strongly look at and consider, you know, self-funding is a continuum, right? You might go to one broker and they might show you a fully integrated program with Primera Blue Cross, your current administrator, which would have no disruption to your network, which would have very easy lift from, you know, getting something like that off the ground. Same network, same benefit plans if you want, same administrator, you know, embedded stop-loss, so the stop-loss that you purchase is actually, would be run through a wholly-owned subsidiary owned by Primera. So, very, you know, integrated program, very simple to understand. PBM is also tightly integrated, it's Express Scripts, but it's tightly integrated with the program. And then, you might have another broker, if you ask for a self-funded quote, show you something that's what I would call a very carved-out approach. So, you might have your, you know, your TPA at one place, your stop-loss at another place, your pharmacy to another place, the bolt-on pharmacy program attached to that, and then various point solutions. Both are great, right? But I guess my point being is that, just to kind of bring this home, is that, you know, other people have told you, "Hey, pick a broker and then, and then figure out what to do." Again, if we were sitting at the coffee stand down the street and you asked for my advice, I would say, you know, if my roof's leaking or my roof's broke, I don't just call one person and tell them, "Hey, send me a bill." I'd probably call a couple people and get a couple different bids. And so, with that in mind, I don't, you know, if I'm you guys, I think it's okay to, because of the different programs, because of the continuum that's self-funded, it really relies upon, you know, I think that's just being smart with your dollars, it's just being good stewards. And I'd say, it wouldn't hurt to actually have a couple of the different brokers give you a couple of different looks. Now, candidly, is that a pain in the rear for the broker? Yes. Is it a pain in the rear for the insurance carrier? Yeah, because they have multiple different quotes, same time, they're trying to keep everything straight. This person wants this commission, this person wants this commission, they've asked for different benefit plans. It's messy. Yes, absolutely. But you guys are the client, you're the customer. And so, the way I look at it is that you should get what, you should get the best possible deal, you should get what you want, you should get what you need, and so what, that that's a little more challenging on everybody else? And so, that's just one thing that popped to me, is that, you know, sometimes that makes sense to pick your broker and go down the road motors, but a lot of times, to me, it's with the complexity that you guys have and the continuum of possible solutions and the issue that you have with VIBA, I don't think it's gonna hurt you to have a couple people look at this for you. And again, if you're my cousin and I was giving my cousin advice, that's what I'd tell him, right? Marketing strategies, if I were you guys, I'd look at level-funded and self-funded really And then, pick somebody that can walk hand-in-hand with you in VIBA and provide some really meaningful data analytics. Data analytics that will speak to possible migration, should you change the contribution structure? Migration, should you change the VIBA structure? And someone that's gonna work with you cooperatively to, you know, work with your bargaining units and dig into those contracts and find out, okay, what's possible, when, and how do we help you with those decisions and those discussions? And it's, you know, in real time, say, "Okay, this would be the impact of this possible, this possible, if you were to negotiate this, this would be the actual impact." And the final thing I would say is, get a compensation disclosure from whoever y'all work with. And so, what I mean by that is, especially as you go self, look at self-funding, just have whoever you're working with tell you, "Okay, what are you charging and how are you charging it? So, is it, are you charging me a PEPM on the admin? Are you charging me a percentage on the stop-loss? Are you taking anything for pharmacy? Are there any overrides on the stop-loss? Am I in a pool with other people? How is that, how is that calculated?" So, I would just say, just make sure that you ask, right, and so you know what you're paying for. And that'd be my advice to round out today.
Questions, commissioners?
I had a quick question, if I may.
Oh, yes, Jeff, go ahead. Mr. Briggs.
So, you had mentioned that the April deadline may not be a hard deadline. Did you have a deadline for us?
So, the State Risk Commissioner said 90 days is what they need in order to render a decision, and they, I believe they told you, Joe, that's the outset, right? That's the longest.
That's the max that they have. Most of the time, it's quicker than that. Now, would we go up to the 90-day mark or recommend submitting for approval, you know, 90 days before the effective date? No, but it could be after April. If you had a good idea by, you know, summer, end of summer, that would probably be appropriate.
Yeah, most stop-loss carriers too, in order to get a firm stop-loss quote, if you do go self-funded, typically like to see 10 months of data. So, that's pushing it out anyway. A lot of times, we can get those rates locked and firm without providing the 10 months of data, a little bit before. But I guess my point in saying that is that I think you might have, you know, a little more time. We still want you to be, we still would want you to be, you know, kind of moving things along, I guess, if you will, but I don't think you need to pull the trigger in two weeks or all bets are off.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
I'd just like to say in your analogy, when you said if you have a leaky roof, you'd get multiple bids along with that.
Yeah.
You don't replace the carpet before you fix a roof.
Yeah.
And to me, our problem is VIBA. We've gotta fix VIBA. We've gotta get this, and we're working through that right now. And along those lines, Ms. Wilder, you were telling us we need to have this sort of in place by June, did you not? Are we gonna be outside that 90-day window if we want 90 days?
Um...
April, May, June?
I know when we've gone with, they go out to market, if we were gonna go out to market, it's in August. So, I think by June, we need to know if we're changing brokers, what we're going to do.
Okay.
So, that would have been kind of that June cutoff.
And the other, maybe that first question I asked you, maybe I should rephrase it, is any other of these entities that you're insuring have a $1,650 VIBA contribution?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you for clarification to the public that's out there listening to this presentation. There is nobody giving that kind of contribution anywhere in the state. Thank you.
And to your point earlier about the carpet and the roof, that's, again, that's why we said the ordering of the solution is important to keep in mind, right?
Yes. And you played it out there, I just wanted to simplify.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
I really appreciate you all coming in and giving us an education on the insurance. Muchly appreciated, yes.
While we adjust, can I run you to the restroom?
Yes, we'll take a three-minute recess.
You are our next presenter.
Thank you. Perfectly, did you want your water? I'll take it. I'm gonna give it.
Yeah, absolutely. Go take it.[1354.23]
Yeah, absolutely.
Same set amount of money, what happens if one of the employees has a family with six kids? They get that set amount of money and then they gotta buy a plan according to that amount of money?
Yeah, that's the way that the defined contribution works. A family with six kids in most scenarios would likely qualify for subsidy at least on their dependent costs. So they might not have to pay full freight for all six dependents. But that's a function of their household income.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to discuss the more traditional methods, right? So being the fully insured, self-insured, level-funded, hybrid-funded, right? And what's interesting about our industry is we throw these terms around like they're water. And we don't recognize a lot of times that, you know, sometimes we live and breathe it and a lot of people don't. And so I just wanted to take a moment because the bottom line is that all three of those funding methodologies are similar in that there's three or four components that I'll make them up. It's all about where the risk lies in those components, right? And so if I could, we'll take a look at those three components. So whether it's fully insured, level-funded, self-infunded, the three components are the administration. And I'm kind of basic guy, so I use the thought process of buckets, right? So three buckets, we've got our admin fee bucket, right? And that's pretty simple, the money goes into the bucket, the money comes out of the bucket, that's how that works. And you're paying the admin fee, you're paying the TPA to keep their lights on, you're paying them to rent the network, you're paying them to administer the claims and the like. If we think about a premium, a monthly premium, say a hundred thousand dollars, probably 10 to 15% of that goes into that admin bucket, right? It's 10,000 to 15,000 dollars. The biggest chunk clearly is the claims bucket, right? And how that works is every month that money goes into a claims bucket. We talked about the previous presentation, talked about, you know, claims come in to, from the TPA, right? You're, all of our people go to the doctor, they, the TPA applies the deductible, they apply the co-insurance. And then whatever's left over is that pot of money that we've got to pull out of that bucket, right? And how it works in the fully insured versus self-funded versus hybrid is that who owns that money at the end of the day is on the fully insured side is the insurance carrier, right? So if there's surplus left over, the insurance carrier keeps that money. If there's, if we go over, so we've drained everything out of that bucket, the insurance company's not going to come back to you and say, hey, you owe us money, right? They'll spread that risk across their other book of business. And the self-funded piece is you all own that bucket. So at the end of the day, if there's a surplus in there, right, the county gets to maintain that. But the risk side of it is if we drain that bucket, right? And I agree with the assessment that the county, that a self-funded model might work for Franklin County. Here's my concern though with it. And this is why our recommendation would be if we're going to go down that more traditional route, we start with that level-funded or hybrid funding piece first. I've sat across from the table on a number of clients and if we get that wrong, that's, now we talked about VIBA catastrophes, that's a catastrophe. Where I've sat across the table of clients that are smaller that went to self-funded, that didn't have any business going to self-funded because the rates weren't set correctly and it just about put them out of business. Because what happens is if we drain that bucket from a claim standpoint, the insurance carrier doesn't care. They want the money to be able to pay those claims, so we have to get that right. So our recommendation would, of course, if we're going to go down that model, would be move to the level-funded so that we know what the experience looks like, that we can set those rates appropriately. Of course, and then the last budget is reserves are run out, right? And reserves is, in its most simplistic terms, think about a rainy day fund, right? You, as an individual, probably have, you set aside money just in case the furnace blows up or something along those slides. Same exact thing with insurance, right? We want to make sure that we've got a reserve fund set up. Now, the state mandates there are certain reserve requirements that we have to meet, so that's good. And the other part of that bucket is run out. Because we know what happens is if Franklin County were to ever leave Primera, right? Claims are going to continue to come in and they need money to be able to pay those claims after Franklin County has terminated that contract. So that's, that money is set aside on that front. So whatever funding model we choose, right? Those are all the three components. The risk really stands with who owns that claims bucket to make sure that we get it right. We also talked about stop-loss, right? In its most simplistic form, think of it like health or like auto insurance, right? You have a $500 deductible, right? With stop-loss insurance, you've got an individual deductible typically from a size your group would be anywhere between 75,000 to 100,000, somewhere around there, right? And all that is, is saying that whenever the claims come in, anything 100,000 or below Franklin County would be responsible for, anything 101,000 and above, right? That stop-loss carrier would take that additional risk. So there is that additional protection for that claims bucket, but we can't simply rely on that because ultimately if a bunch of claims come in and they don't hit that individual's stop-loss bucket and what, we haven't filled our claims bucket enough, right? We're going to put ourselves in a very, very precarious spot and we just, that doesn't make sense at all. So we've talked a lot about this, you guys have heard a number of the pros and cons, right? So I don't, I don't feel like it would make the most sense to just rehash all of the pros and cons of all those. So what I'd rather do is we've talked about fully insured, we've talked about level-funded hybrid funding, we've talked about self-insured, I've kind of given you the basics of it. So I just would like to open it up to any questions. You all have any questions on how this works? What are your thoughts on the process?
Questions, commissioners?
I appreciate you breaking it down into simple terms about this is what the bucket is and this is what the bucket means. That's, that's very, very helpful because if there's anything that I have learned going through this process that health insurance is a very complex and, and there's, there's thousands and thousands of different ways you could, you could do it. And so I appreciate you breaking it down into a simpler format for consideration. I don't know that I have any, any specific questions. We have a challenge that we've identified that if we don't get our arms around it, we're gonna, we're gonna get into a worse spot. So I appreciate, this, this piece helps me, really does a side-by-side and that's, that's, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have any questions.
No questions here. We've had so many presentations, we're sort of getting a good idea, right?
All right, then I'll step through quickly. I mean, I think that you have had a pretty good assessment of the plans available through the PEB, the Public Employees Benefit Board. You know that they are the largest pool of employers in the state of Washington. You know, their, their plans and offerings are comprehensive for sure. I don't know, based on the prior presentation, they said that they did an analysis on the published rates. If that is accurate, I did not look at that level of detail, but I presume their work is probably accurate. If that's the truth, then I don't know the, a consideration for the PEB would be the direction that you would really look right now. Doesn't mean it wouldn't be in the future, okay? The Washington County's Insurance Fund, we were requested to include information on that as well. They are a smaller pool program and quite frankly, I do believe that Franklin County, if you rejoined, would be one of the larger, if not top-tier, size-wise employer in that pool, okay? What that means is because they don't provide reporting, you wouldn't really have an indicator or a way to know if your utilization, your group's utilization was positively or negatively influenced by the pool's experience or overall utilization. So I'm not sure again that that is the best recommendation for Franklin County at this time, but certainly a viable option available to municipalities. And then Greg talked on fully insured and level-funded. This, these slides just play out the remainder of the content. I'll flip through them just because we're, we're looking at everything together here. But the side-by-side comparison lays out all the bullet points for you. Really, I think you have a number of different options and based on what I've heard, of course, we don't have access to your utilization or your data at this point. But based on what we've heard, I think it probably is, you know, a good recommendation that you should be seeking other funding options. The way that we take a look at those types of scenarios is really to model, let's see, I'll leave that there, really to model not only plan options, so you're fully insured, level-funded, self-funded, we go out and get quotes, put the comparison together and come back to you to show you what the actual numbers look like. But the other part of our analysis really includes contribution modeling. You heard about that in the prior presentation. We probably have our own style of the way that we would do that. But I think it's really important, especially given what you have voiced as kind of the crux of the issue, the biggest concern, is looking at both the contribution to your employees' costs, so their monthly premium contribution and how much the county kicks in and VIBA being a part of that. So it's really a big picture look, not just at one component in all of that.
Mr. Densel? Questions?
I don't think so.
No?
We thank you very much for your time and yeah, we're gonna have to make a decision, we're gonna have to move down the road here. So we will probably have another workshop with just the commissioners and our HR director and we'll be in touch.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, public comment, we have nobody in, huh? Oh, we got one more? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was it. Okay, oh, sorry, Rich.
That's okay. It's almost afternoon, so I'll say good afternoon. My name's Rich Dickman. I have worked for the last 25 years as of in two weeks on the HRA VIBA trust. And I helped originally set up the HRA VIBA here at the county over 20 years ago. And I have a little bit of a presentation, but also if you have any questions, comments, concerns, definitely feel free to throw them out at me either while I'm speaking, that's fine, or at the end. So just to set the stage, what the HRA VIBA is, is a tax-free way to set aside money instead of sending it to an insurance company into an account. Then those employees invest those dollars tax-free and then they come out tax-free. And the original purpose of the trust, the first trust, which is the school district trust called VIBA, not HRA VIBA, but their sister trust, is to help pay retiree healthcare expenses. Not just in service, but really try to grow the thing up to have enough in your account to pay for your healthcare after you leave service. There is a financial strain, as you know, on the employer and on the individuals. Healthcare keeps going up, 51% of folks say it's challenging to afford healthcare. And other folks say, you know, they struggle to pay just their daily living. Recent study that Gallagher did was 38% struggle for those. And then there are different investment companies that have been getting into the market of educating folks, especially retiree plan providers like Fidelity, for example. In 2023 announced that the average retired couple at age 65 is going to spend over $300,000 in retirement. We've worked on this ourselves internally and for public sector folks who typically can retire earlier, that number could be well over $350,000 or $400,000 depending on healthcare costs. And right now, per individual, let's say someone was to retire, just cover their insurance premiums, not their copays or deductibles at age 55, maybe their, the sheriff's department or other buyer, they're going to probably spend over $200,000 in their retirement years on those kind of expenses. Just the premiums, not the copays, the deductibles. So more and more people aren't retiring on time, unfortunately. Across the state, we see more people waiting till at least age 65, even though they can, under the retirement systems, retire earlier. And it's still $100,000 per person that they expect. We expect that they'll be spending. So the IRS rules say employers can fund the plan, not individuals. So the HRA VIBA can only be decided on funding by the employer, but the employer gets to decide how much goes in. It's not that the trust is telling any employer how much to contribute. It's really internally and with the help of your external consultants, maybe on your health benefits, to come up with a good funding methodology into the plan. There is no requirement like there is on a health savings account to have a true high deductible healthcare plan. So there's the benefit of that, you can design any type of healthcare plan that you want to provide your employees and have dollars going into their VIBA. There's no carryover limits or funding limits. So an employee could have enough accumulated over their course of their career. We have over half of your participants are retirees. So there's over 300 folks that have VIBA accounts because they worked here. They did their stint, they worked and then they took their plan with them into retirement. Again, tax-free in, tax-free up, tax-free out. And that's why you would see on the data analytics that you'll have almost $2 million come in, over a million dollars go out, close to 2 million in claims and then close to a million a year annually in investment earnings. So instead of just sending funds to a insurance company to provide coverage, which may or may not be utilized, you're putting money into the HRA for your employees to then, if they can save it, great, take care of themselves, do well in their healthcare, then it'll continue to grow. If not, they can use it for their out-of-pocket healthcare costs.
Mr. Densel?
So how is the money contributed? How is it deposited? Is it done like in a dollar-cost averaging scheme, like an IRA would be? Or is it in a lump sum payment to be able to?
How are the contributions made?
Yes.
Okay, the contributions are made, they're set by the employer to decide how much goes in.
Monthly though?
Monthly, usually monthly. It could be lump sum. A lot of the VIBAs across the state are lump sum contributions, which could be tens or even $100,000. I've seen some large leave cash outs when someone were to retire. Instead of being taxed and then pay on 100,000, 30,000 in taxes, the whole 100,000 goes into the account, then it's invested and then comes out. And I know the county does do leave cash outs at retirement. To create a win-win situation, of course, we, we do have to pay attention to how much you're contributing. And it is up to the employer to decide how much to contribute. As you've mentioned, you know, we're putting in a lot of money. Does anyone else do $1,700 a month into the accounts? Some employers with lump sum contributions, you could say they put in a lot of money. I don't know if it would equal out to $1,700 a month. But there are several throughout, and there's over 700 participating municipalities that have bargained with their employees for large monthly contributions as well. So why did you just join this trust? Well, it was probably for a couple of reasons. One was to help, instead of just sending money to the insurance company to help set aside money that your employees could have their management of those funds and to help people retire on time and save the taxes on those leave cash outs. We have, over the years, improved the trust, most of the processes are online. We had investment options that have changed and grown over the years. We've had our customer care team taken in-house in Spokane. So when folks have questions about their account, they're calling folks in Spokane on that. They have a 90-plus percent excellent rating with our participants and hold times are usually less than 10 seconds. As far as an administrator of these type of plans, that's the best in the country. And we have, unlike most funded HRAs, an expanded air death benefit. So if you die with money in your account, most funded HRAs, it can only go to your spouse and your dependents. And most of us of an age, if we pass away with money in our accounts, we don't have qualified dependents anymore, our children are typically over 26. So within the HRA VIBA trust, the IRS under 105J of the IRS code said if the trust provided an expanded air death benefit prior to 2008, the trust could continue to do that starting back in 2016. So that happened. So we rarely have any funds that are actually forfeited. They typically just go on to other family members in the event that the participant passes away. And if you have no spouse, dependents or other family members, you can list the account beneficiary designation. So when you log into your account, you can do that. And if you don't, which some people don't, we follow the laws of intestacies and pass the account down that way.
And if they are forfeited, who do they go to?
If the funds are forfeited, it's rare, but if they are forfeited, it comes back to the county to be used either for future contributions or reallocated to the other remaining participants of the county, not held in the trust. It has to be, legally it has to endure or benefit the participants, their spouse, their dependents, and in the rarer case, you know, beneficiaries. And then if it can't be used for that purpose, it has to be returned through the employer and the employer then has to, because it's an irrevocable trust, use those for other participants. Doesn't go back into the general fund. More numbers about the high cost for retiree healthcare. I just, I wanted to bring that forward because the fact that, you know, I've heard many comments that says, you know, the HRA isn't that great of a benefit. Well, what's the intent of the benefit? Are you intending to just use it for in-service benefit? Or are you wanting employees to be able to take advantage of the long-term growth of the fund? If it is that, then it's doing very well. One of the best probably in the country. There are VIBAs across the country, I know some, especially in California, that have a lot more money going into them than what the county is contributing. But then in California, you know, they used to have lifetime benefits. So if you retire from the county, they would pay your healthcare for the rest of your life. And I went from here as a state auditor down to California when my wife got promoted from the site to San Francisco and I helped the school district get away from that because it was a $500,000 long-term liability for everyone in the room. And we couldn't afford to continue that. And if we're at a point where we need to make changes to funding the HRA VIBA, working with your council, you can do that. It's not that we set those funding requirements.
Have you ever seen VIBA going to cash to somebody in lieu of a VIBA account?
You can't. IRS rules do not allow you the individual choice between getting cash and VIBA. It has to be a decision by the employer or the employee group working with the employer to say, for this group, we're not going to receive cash.
In this county government here, we have people receiving VIBA contributions in the form of cash and paying taxes on it. And you're saying that's illegal?
It's non-compliant with the IRS.
We have sent a letter to the Attorney General of the state of Washington and he has not replied and it's going to be two years in June on this very topic.
I don't know if you want me to jump in. I would say it's not an individual choice, it was a group choice.
Okay.
So the one, the people who do receive in cash, they are parts of the group and the group selected that instead of the VIBA.
Okay. We've talked about that, but, but that is right. You would, you would lose your, your tax exempt status as, what is it, a 501(c)(9) if you allow individual members to opt out.
Just making you aware of what we're facing here in the county. And our commissioners that were previous to us joined a group to make it okay for them. That was one of the things they did, they joined a group.
It's my understanding though, it was a group decision, not an individual choice.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct?
That's accurate and I believe there's also, in addition to that, there may be some CBAs that also allow that as well.
The CBA allows the choice between cash and the VIBA?
I believe there's, there's some CBAs that also have
The CBA specifies that they take cash in lieu of verses.
Oh, okay, it says cash instead of the VIBA, yes, that's common and allowable. Again, no individual choice is the hallmark. And also the second thing is don't favor your highly compensated individuals within the IRS's rules.
Okay.
Okay, good. Well, let me, there's, I must be going backwards here. Okay. I said that the, the customer care team on average is above 90%. I don't get very many complaints from anyone in Franklin County about having their VIBA or using their VIBA. But if they, they do, please let us know. We want to make sure we're doing the very best we can. And Gallagher Consulting, including the HRA Services, we have a 99% very good or excellent rating. We have choices of the investments. So your employees can choose how much risk they want to take. We have two routes. One is a premixed portfolio, so we have four of those. You can choose those if you're not into choosing your own investment allocation, you just choose one of those. Or you can mix and match and build your own portfolio and you can change your investment allocation monthly, so you're not locked in. We've moved to digital services. A lot of, when I first started, was just a paper claim form. You send it into Spokane, we process it and you send your money. Now you have online portfolios, you log into your account, you have access to all your account information, including your investments and your claims, and we process those daily. We also have a mobile app, it's free, you can use the mobile app, download it, take a picture of supporting documentation, send it in. And if you've used your benefits card, everyone gets a free benefits card. They can swipe that card. It works well for picking up prescriptions. We don't ask for supporting documentation then because it's a prescription and the IRS allows that. But when you go into the dentist, because they do cosmetic things, they do teeth whitening and things like that, we ask for supporting documentation and you can use the mobile app or send it in to us. So we try to make it as easy as possible. And then finally, for retirees, this is the number one way to use a VIBA account in retirement is just to have us automatically reimburse you for your retiree health insurance. And in Washington, overall, using the numbers that we have from the various municipalities, including the state, the average retired couple is spending $1,800 a month pre-65, are their health insurance premiums. So having enough money in your VIBA is a great benefit. Now, funding it at the level that the county was funding, especially for the non-reps, and I know you have to negotiate with your represented employees, that was difficult because it was tied to whatever the rate was for your health insurance. My recommendation is always, look at that. Most employers set that at 50% of the allocation. So if it's $1,000 a month and you waive off insurance, you only get 500 in your VIBA. Try to reduce adverse selection and also, as the modeling would show, you get down to something that provides a good benefit and also keeps those folks that would be better off on another plan. Maybe their spouse works out on the site and they can take them there. Or works for the school district, which is very common here at the county, and under the school district's cost structure And under the school district's cost structure, families only pay three times that of an individual. So it could be more affordable to be on your spouse's plan at the district.
I believe there's one more, and that's military service?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One thing that Spokane County does for military service folks, they exclude them from a, a HRA VBA contribution because they're on TRICARE. So they have said, you're not eligible to participate in the VBA for those kind of ongoing contributions. See, there's things that we can consider. As long as it's not individual choice and we're still compliant with labor laws, then we can do things of that nature, too.
All right.
The costs aren't borne by the employers. This trust is run by the cities, counties, and special purpose tax districts. But the trustees volunteer their time to, to run the plan. Of course, it has health care costs. It is a health plan. So the monthly fee is paid by the participants, and that's a dollar fifty till you get to five thousand in your account. Then it's waived. And then an annualized asset-based fee of approximately one percent. It's less than that right now. And typically, over the last, well, since I've been working on the trust for twenty-five years, it's cut in half now. So as the trust has grown and economies of scale, done better at streamlining things, those costs have come down. And for the larger account holders, once you get above ten thousand, all assets above ten thousand, see a point two five percent reduction on the annualized asset-based fee. And I'll skip over the takeaways. I'm sure you guys understand VBA. I always give this out. There's my email address, rich underscore Dickman at A J G dot com. And my cell phone number, it's five oh nine 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 zero seven two six two. And I do this for state employees, too. I, I do a lot of the Department of Retirement Systems workshops on Saturdays. And I'm the only one that does this, but I don't mind if people call me on my cell. I know that's not the way the world usually works. But I want to be there for any discussions you might have, questions, comments, concerns. Now, does anyone have any questions?
Questions, commissioners, Mr. Danzel, Jeff?
I had more of a comment. I, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Dickman, for helping me better understand VBA. When I had questions about VBA, didn't understand much of anything about it and was kind of thrown into it when we were having, but I would call a controversy about VBA here at the county and very complicated issue. And you just have a wealth of information about it. So, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
You indicated that there's over seven hundred employers that are a part of this VBA system.
Yes.
What, what is the VBA contribution average?
I don't know off the top of my head. Because remember that VBA started out primarily with leave cash outs? And the county even did that.
I appreciate that, but, but doing actuarial work, surely you have averages on, on, on what, you know, contributions and type things are.
I know the average account balance. I know what the average sick leave cash out is. I know that.
Can we have that average account balance?
Sure.
What is that? Just curious.
Trust-wide, it's ten thousand dollars. Because trust-wide, remember, sick leave cash out is the most common funding of all VBA's. So those are ten, tend to be eight to ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
The monthly contributions are a newer funding for a lot of employers. Not all, but a lot of employers have only been funding on a monthly basis for ten years. And these trusts have been around for almost forty years. The HRA VBA, the VBA trust started first. It's now forty-one years old. You're a few years behind that.
And, Mr. Bowman?
I do have, yours, if you want specific on the county.
Yes, please. And then if you could elaborate a little bit more about TRICARE?
Yes.
And, and not being eligible for VBA? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so for Spokane County, when they do a leave cash out, if you're a retired military.
Is this, is this statewide, nationwide, or is this county?
Spokane County.
So, so they put this into their VBA contribution? Okay.
Yeah, they said, if you're retiring from Spokane County and are on TRICARE, because you're retired military, then your sick leave will not go into VBA. It's part of the eligibility criteria for, for that plan.
Okay.
Last question?
Sure, absolutely.
No, that's okay. Rich, I just have one question. You keep referencing cash out that could go in, but specifically sick. Is it only sick leave? Because we now have a PTO balance, which accumulates our vacation and sick leave.
Right, you, you move to that. So it could be PTO, could be sick, it could be vacation, whatever leave system you have, that's usually the number one funding method for VBA's across the country, is those leave cash outs.
And then if I could ask an additional question, is that something that, because we used to have that. I know we went away from it. I don't know all the history on that. Is that something that we might have changed in our contract, if you will, for lack of term? With, with VBA?
No, with internally. No, it's an internal decision. When you change internally, you're just changing how you're funding VBA. That's up to the county to decide.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then the average account balance here at, at the end of two thousand and twenty-four was nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars for the six hundred and twenty participants.
Say that number again, please.
Nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars.
So that's like fourteen months of contributions?
About. So I would like to have a, the, the account balance is, is, that, that's a helpful piece to the puzzle. But I would really like to know what an average contribution is.
Across the trust?
Across the trust, or, I don't know if, if across the trust is the proper way to look at it. But, but of, of similar options as Franklin County has put together.
But would you want this statewide or multi-state? Because he's already referred to California as being.
Different.
Yeah.
I, I just, right now, we don't have any context. So the numbers that we have been provided is of the, of comparable counties in the state, we're four times higher than, than our comparable partners. Our individual contribution is, I believe, fifteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars a month. And our next closest, the, the next one that falls below us is in the seven hundred range. And so I would like to have an understanding, because right now, VBA does not make any sense to me. I don't have any understanding of the, of how we got here. And it doesn't make sense. And so maybe you can shed some light on that, being, having been here since the, the inception of this plan in Franklin County.
So what made sense was, at the time, when they were looking at the, the spend for healthcare, so many people were double-covered. They were on their spouse's insurance. They said, at that point in time, well, we could give you, instead of having you double-covered and just send more money to the insurance companies, the thought, we'll give you money in, into the HRA VBA. You can use that for your copays, your deductibles, your out-of-pocket on your spouse's health plan. Then any unearned, unspent dollars, sorry, you can invest those funds tax-free, have those funds potentially grow tax-free, and then come out tax-free for your out-of-pocket healthcare costs now. But ultimately, when you retire, have a, a nice nest egg to be able to pay retiree healthcare costs, too.
So that was the foundation of VBA in Franklin County, was to make this a retirement benefit?
Both, in-service and retirement. So it's just, they saw that being double-covered wasn't as rich a benefit as if we gave people funds into their VBA and had them go on to their spouse's health plan.
Because I've been, I've been told that the, this benefit was set up for employees to have an in-service benefit. It's never been indicated to me that it was ever intended to be a retirement benefit.
It's in-service and post-separation. It's always been that.
Okay, so what do you see with, with other organizations that? My understanding is, and I don't, I don't have the numbers to back this up, but certainly you could probably fill us in. I've been told that our VBA cost at the county has gone up over eighty percent in the last four years.
Your VBA contribution costs? Is that what you mean?
Because of the waivers and because, you know, the, the expense that the county has incurred in the last four years has gone up over eighty percent.
And I think also you might throw in, and I haven't taken a look, was there ever a change from the amount that was contributed in the past? Did they increase it for some reason?
So that, that has happened. And that's what we're trying to do, is kind of unscramble these eggs and have an understanding of how we got here and, and how do we, how do we get our arms back around it? Because.
I would say uncouple it from being part of the allocation for benefits. Instead of saying, we're going to provide you the exact dollar amount that we're contributing for health insurance into the VBA. My recommendation has always been, that's too much. Should look at what most employers do, and that includes all the school districts in Oregon. And we used to do this in Washington, but they changed their platform, the state took over their benefits. But they only give fifty percent of their known allocation.
So the max VBA contribution is maximum fifty percent of the healthcare contribution?
In those employers. It's up to the employer to decide if they want to use that recommendation or not. My worry is adverse selection. And I know the other consultants that have come forward said, if you make it too attractive, then there's a potential of your in-service benefit skyrocketing.
And, and that's, that's kind of something that we've, we've found is, is the two benefits that we have, health insurance and VBA, are, are, it's not that they're, well, I guess they are competing because our pool is getting more expensive and the opt-out is getting more expensive because more people are doing it.
And you're providing the same level of contribution for both plans.
Yes. Would you back up two slides? I had some pretty detailed questions, but I think that you answered them for the most part. Right there.
Okay, yes.
So earlier, we, we heard a number of fifteen to twenty percent being used in administration. So trying to understand the administration or the administrative cost of this VBA. It appears from what you're doing, that what you're describing is the administrative and the operation of this VBA plan is primarily done with the, with the one percent of balance, of the balance with a discount over ten thousand. So that's how you're operating this?
Yes.
Okay.
And how we get that down is, well, one, we're not run by an insurance company. We're run by the cities, counties, and special purpose tax districts. That, that's the governing board, and they volunteer their time, but they are the fiduciaries. And they do put the pressure to make things run better, faster, cheaper. That's the idea. And we're always striving to be the best. And in the marketplace, we're glad to be the best, but we're always in trying to improve.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that. I, I sit on a number of boards, both as a commissioner and, and in my, in my, my other life. And there's, it's a, there's a vast disparity on what it costs to run things. And there's a board that I sit on that spends less than one percent on, on the administrative process. And there's others that I'm familiar with, having, having looked deeply into it, that, you know, is forty-plus percent in the administration. And so I appreciate seeing this. That's really helpful, having an understanding. And so my last question is, and I would like to have an answer, and we, we can't get it today, but I would like to know. And I don't know, I'm not sure exactly how to ask this question, if it's a trust-wide average or if it's a, a like municipal size average. I just, I'm not really sure how to ask that question. So we looked at, at counties in Washington State. We did seventeen comparisons. And, and, you know, we were two and a half times roughly what the, what, or I'm sorry, close to four times. But there was, you know, our next, our next one below us, we were, we were, you know, almost two and a half times what that VBA contribution was.
Did you also compare what their total spend is on health benefits? That's where I would look as a former finance officer.
That was more than last week, and so I'd have to get this paper back in front of me. But I do remember the disparity was so large that, that trying to have an understanding or, or trying to explain it was very difficult.
Well, I think fundamentally is that you're funding it in a way that most employers wouldn't. Probably for equity purposes. You know, you wanted to treat everybody the same, so you provided the same level of funding. But I'm not sure. I'm just guessing there.
Yeah.
But as far as comparing yourself to another county, my recommendation, you don't have to do this, is that what is their spend on health benefits? Overall, with VBA and without VBA? How are they managing those dollars, sacred dollars that the taxpayers and trust, are they getting the best bang for their buck? If you're just saying, well, we're, we're putting a lot more into VBA, well, maybe they have a very low deductible and they're paying two thousand a month for a composite rate medical plan for their employees, which fits best with their population. So it, I can definitely get you the numbers if you want me to break it out, but I'll have to do some research.
Don't, don't get real technical. Just, just some, some general information is helpful. As the, as the chairman pointed out a little bit ago, we're spending as much in VBA contributions as we are for the healthcare benefits of this county. And the disparity is so wide that we, we really have to get our, our arms around it. And so I really appreciate some of the context that you've brought to us on this.
And thankfully, you have the ability. We do not charge a premium. We don't come to you and say, okay, you have to contribute more into VBA. It's whatever the county decides to contribute. It's up to the county, you know, to either collectively bargain.
Very, very helpful.
Oh, you're welcome. And to know that you're not also paying the administrative side of it as well as the, the, making the contribution.
So you made comment about the best way to tackle this would be to uncouple from the insurance policy. How do we do that with the unions?
That might have to be a lot of discussion.
It's a loaded question.
I'm just asking.
No, I know. And I think that'd be additional discussions, and I'm happy to work with you on that. Just show them, look, this is not affordable, and show them that.
We would need that.
Yeah.
We do need that.
Yeah. And so working with finance and with your other, whoever you decide, because we're agnostic, too, I'll work with our team really closely, or a line, or a hub, or whoever, on helping you to manage your healthcare spend.
We greatly appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And we thank you. I, I'm sorry, I overlooked you. I, we don't have you on the agenda as we didn't have, we only had, it was broad. So maybe next time we can get this listed out. So because you were a very important factor, I didn't want to overlook, and I'm glad you presented.
I'm kind, I'm kind of curious, Mr. Dickman, if there were any challenges when Spokane took TRICARE folks off of their VBA? Because I, I could imagine there might have been some type of claim that they were protected as honorably discharged veterans under like a wallet type of claim.
Yep, they didn't.
Oh, they didn't?
They wanted, the TRICARE folks wanted cash because the TRICARE premium, although you can use your VBA account for that, is so small, they'd rather take the tax hit and pay the cash.
And they took a tax hit?
Oh, yeah, they took the cash, they had to pay the thirty.
Which is a sign that it's, it turns into a salary instead of a benefit.
It's recognized by the state as a wage, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Sick leave cash out, but it's not counted towards your average final compensation calculation for retirement.
Right.
Which some contributions are. We have employee groups that have negotiated to take less in pay and put it into VBA. Then it's still reportable, if you're part of the state system, for the average final compensation calculation, and you're getting it tax-free.
Well, I thank you very much. Is there any further questions? I think we got another meeting we got to get to now.
Okay.
And that's Board of Health. So we, we're going to have to exit, and I thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman of the Board of Health?
Yeah.
Which one?
Yes, go ahead.
You're going to have your public comment, and then I'll.
Oh, yes. There's nobody in the room, but I will request a public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? I don't see anybody step, stepping forward. So at this time, did you want to state one more thing before we adjourn?
Yeah, I just, back earlier on, I had said that maybe that we should have an open house for our new building and planning director, when he got his feet under him and so forth.
Yes.
And so that's something I think that we should. And so that's something I think that we should consider. I'm going to work with Mr. Danzel and try to put something together. Would like you guys to kind of have some input on that. My idea is maybe have a little bit of a reception at the, maybe the Hapo Center or here somewhere and just invite all of our builders and everybody that works with our building and planning department to come in and meet Mr. Precart. He's doing a phenomenal job. I've gotten, I think I've gotten, I think I've been keeping track. I think I'm at eight phone calls now, saying, what in the world did you guys do? I got my phone call returned, and so that's been really refreshing.
In the positive way, I take it.
Eight. I'm eight and zero right now, and so.
Likewise, I'm getting compliments, too, and so.
Just some food for thought. Thank you.
All righty. So at that, we will adjourn the workshop.